Of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order with all members present. I'm going to ask Mrs. Balboa to just do the invocation for us today. And we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by her husband, Mr. Manuel Balboa.
Okay.
We're in session, folks.
May we bow our heads as we lift our eyes into the hills from whence coming to our help. We're so grateful and so thankful for such a beautiful Tuesday. And for those that are gathered here, our council, the ones that have to support this council, give us a good evening. Let us be so well informed for all the things that they are doing in your name. Amen.
Place up our flag, raise your right hand over your hand and repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
No, HMSA.
Okay, the first presentation might differ in order on your agenda that you see, but we're going to have Mayor Protemp. Valentine has a presentation on the agenda, recognition of Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. So go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, good morning, good evening. Will the Principal, Mr. Esau Baruman, come to the podium?
Good evening, good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. It's always a pleasure. Just to talk a little bit about our school, actually, I'll keep mine to a brief little talk, and then I'll have my students speak about what they've, the great things they've done at HMSA. This year, we were selected as a California Distinguished School. I believe only three other local high schools were awarded that honor. I believe, I think it was West Torrance, us, and I forget who the third one is. So it's a tough thing to do. We're only available, we're only able to get it every four years. So we received the other Golden Ribbon Award four years ago, and before that, we're a distinguished school again. So we're doing that. U.S. News and World Report came out with the rankings. We're a top 100 school in the country. We're rated at the top in California. There are very few schools in the area that are ranked higher than us. So we're doing a lot of great things out there. The reality, the success comes from all the hard work, work the kids do at our campus. We're not a magnet school where we get to pick our kid and say, these kids get to come to HMSA or not. We do great things because our kids work very, very hard at what they do every single day. This is the plaque that was awarded to us at the Distinguished School Dinner, and this was awarded to all the different schools in the country, in the state of California that were distinguished. And this one will be have on display at our office for the next year, or actually, for a very long time. And we were also awarded a flag, which our students will be bringing up in a second.
Yeah, if you, if you bring it up close to the, close to the podium, the cameras will be able to capture that. They got like camera angles all over. And we asked the principal, maybe the principal can go on that side because I think that camera's going to capture the flag. And if you guys could step up more. Is that right, Mr. Chavez? It'll capture it over there, right? Thank you. There you go.
Good evening. My name is Christian Ruiz Flores. I'm a senior at Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. And HMSA has been, has been a wonderful gateway for me and my interest in the STEM field. Ever since freshman year, they welcomed me with open arms. One of the most successful clubs at our school is Mesa, Mathematics, Engineering, Science Achievement. And that club, with our advisor and the, and the student board, they work together to help the students work on projects which they'll compete later on in the school year. Are around, so they start in September, they work till, till March, and they compete them at USC against the schools in the area. This year, we were able to win a medal or a ribbon in each category. So we're very proud of that. HMSA has also worked hard to, to provide us with other opportunities with the local engineering companies as well. Northrup hosted invitationals for high school competitions. And we were, two years ago, we were able to, to win first place and then second place. Unfortunately, they, they had to cancel that competition, but regardless, Mr. Baruman found, found ways to, to keep engaging with, with Raytheon so we could also be invited to, to their engineering competition. Next year in the fall, I'll be, I'll be attending UC Berkeley. So go Bears. And I'm, I'm grateful that, to receive a $1,000 scholarship from Lockheed Martin, made possible through, through, through our school and through Mesa that helped me reach that, that scholarship. So thank you.
Hello, my name is Jelissa Tripler. I'm representing HMSA's Athletic Department. So I've been a student athlete since I was four years old. I've been playing multiple sports since I was four. And I have been in volleyball and softball at HMSA for the past four years. I've been on the varsity team for both sports on, on, in HMSA for all four years. HMSA has definitely given me the opportunity to not only focus on my academics through these past four years, but also to still have fun with my teams and my clubs. I have also played club volleyball outside of school for one year, my freshman year, and that was a little too much, but I still was able to have a lot of fun with my teams with volleyball and softball. I started playing with them even before freshman year started. And they, my coaches always made sure that we were on top of our grades, that school came first, you were a student first and an athlete second. And we've have gone to playoffs all four years that I've been there in volleyball. The first time that we went to playoffs was actually my freshman year, which our coach was thrilled about. And we went further into playoffs this past year, my senior year. In softball, they've been to playoffs four times total, once before I became a freshman, and then three times the past three years. We were not able to go to playoffs this year, but the last three years were, were still fun. Last year, we actually made it to the Elite Eight in Division Six. We moved up a division because of how successful we were. Coaches knew that I was a role model, not only on the court or on the field, but also in school, in classes. Teachers would recognize me as well with grades because they knew I was on honor roll and I was also an athlete. I was captain my senior year for both volleyball and softball, so they knew that they could trust me. HMSA was definitely helpful in learning time management with both these sports. And I, next year, I will be attending UC Davis. Go Aggies. And hopefully, I will keep using my time management skills next fall. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gifthea Tonga, and I'm also a senior at Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. There's a lot I can say about HMSA. HMSA's been a part of my life since I was a kid. My father is a chemistry teacher at Hawthorne Math and Science Academy, so I've grown up with the school. And when I was first attending HMSA, I was a little shy and I was really hesitant towards going, but once I got there, I realized it was the place for me. I started off my freshman year as our Class of 2019 class president through our ASB, Associated Student Body, and I grew through there. I became president again my sophomore year, executive vice president of ASB my junior year, and I am now currently the executive president of ASB my senior year. So HMSA has taught me a lot of leadership roles and has taught me how to, like Joel said, time manage, but also made me a leader. And through that leadership experience, I was also awarded to be a Posse Scholar. And Posse is a program that awards full tuition scholarships to countries across, to schools across the country. And in the fall, I will be attending Middlebury College in Vermont on a full ride for all four years. So that's exciting. And it would not have been possible without Mr. Baruman telling me to expand my boundaries and go to Vermont and see how it's like over there, or our counselors being there every step of the way to make sure that I had the grades for it and that I was prepared for all of my interviews, with all my teachers making sure that my grades are on point and that make sure that I was academically prepared to take on the roles that I will be attending and, oh, that I'll be taking on in college. So even though I was a little hesitant at first to go to HMSA, there is no other school out there for me, and it's, I can say, the best high school ever. So, yeah, thank you.
So we are very proud to present a proclamation to Hawthorne Math and Science Academy and to Principal Baruman. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I would like to read one or two paragraphs from our proclamation and then present it to the principal. Whereas Hawthorne Math and Science Academy has brought national recognition to itself and to the city of Hawthorne. Out of 17,245 ranked schools in the United States, Hawthorne Math and Science Academy is ranked 89 in the national rankings, where schools are ranked on their performance on state-required tests, graduation, and how well they prepare students for college. Further, the school is ranked 20 in rankings for charter high schools and 11, number 11 for California high schools. Also, in 2019, Hawthorne Math and Science Academy tied for first place in the graduation rate rank. The students are being given the tools to succeed in college, ready to major in those fields, which will prepare them to obtain 21st century jobs in thriving and lucrative fields, where the median range, median wage in 2018 was $84,880. So we are so proud to present this proclamation to the students, to the school, and to the principal, a certificate of recognition, because we know that it takes a village and we know that the students don't do this by themselves. So thank you, Principal Baruman. And our certificate of recognition says, "We appreciate your dedicated service to the students and faculty of the Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. Your vision and leadership has been instrumental in making Hawthorne Math and Science Academy a nationally recognized STEM high school, which gives students the tools to succeed in college and beyond. We are extremely proud to have you as a part of our community, the city of good neighbors." So thank you, and we're going to present this to you. And can we have a photo op now?
To the chair just a minute, please.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Do others have, have comments, please?
First, one, Dr. Morgan, the superintendent of Hawthorne School District, stand, please. And can you say a few words about the HMSA because you were there from the day that we created HMSA?
It's a fabulous place because of the students and the staff and the administration. They do it all, and they do it for the right reasons, for the kids. And I thank them for it.
All right, thank you, Dr. Morgan. And congratulations, Mr. Baruman. So I know you a long time. Since you were a vice principal, then you became a principal, so you have take HMSA to the stars. And I appreciate it deeply for you, all your commitment. And I see the vice principals right over there, welcome, and the students that who make us shine, right? Because they are the future. And when you see 100% graduation and most of them like going to four-year college, and that is where every year I go to your scholarship night. And last Tuesday night, I did, gave about six scholarships to the young kids, and I will, will continue to do that because it's an outstanding school. And that just shows that a minority school, because most of the kids are from different culture, different background, so they, they're not the elite per se, but they came from our middle schools, you know, the three middle schools, and these kids succeed tremendously. So it showed that any kid can learn and just give them the right tools and they will succeed. Thank you.
Okay, so I just want to, you know, recognize you too, Principal Baruman. Remember you from when you and my brother Gerard were working, starting your educational careers back at the previous charter school that everybody started off at. And to see that when you came to HMSA, I've been tracking it, when you came in and you immediately took it up to a higher level immediately, and now we've had a constant presence on the U.S. News and World Report rankings in the top 100, guaranteeing the top 50, and then it's slowly, and then it quickly entered the top, the top 20. So that's a real big, big, big accomplishment, and I'm really happy. It goes to show how great our Hawthorne School District is functioning in the local area. We have, we're an aerospace area, and we have a conglomeration, I don't know if that's the right word, we have a conglomeration of math and science schools in the area. You know, our vice per school district has theirs, Lenox has theirs, we have, Longdale School Districts has theirs, and even there's, I can kind of group in CAMs also, right? And to see that our school district has produced a school that has risen to the top amongst that group of, of schools is, makes me very proud, makes our community very proud. And I always, and I always mention Hawthorne Math and Science all the time, you know, and I'm really proud. And I'm really proud that we're able to do that. And so it goes a long way to show where we are. And I mean, you know, if people say, oh, our schools, this and that, are they contribute to property values? Well, I mean, you guys are skyrocketing, and so our property values are skyrocketing because of you guys. So we have you guys to thank. But congratulations, and win our finals coming up. Our seniors are tomorrow, okay, good. Okay, well, I wish them good luck. If anybody needs any tutoring in physics, or algebra, or geometry trig, or whatever, that's what I teach in high school, so I'd be glad, just reach out to me, okay? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, no, I, it just makes you proud to have kids like that in our community, you know, that's, that's a very short speech, you know, very, I think that it's great that we recognize them, you know, that we bring them up here in front of everybody and, and talk about their achievement and, and see how bright these kids are going to. They're, they're very, very bright. And so I'm very proud that, that we have you and, and them and the community in setting an example of what's possible. So, yeah, congratulations, congratulations.
To the chair. Honestly, the, the highest thing that I should prioritize, education, finishing mine recently. Money can come and go, but the education aspect of it, you can never lose. And that's the one thing that I see at Hawthorne Math and Science Academy, is the fact that you guys are pushing these students to be phenomenal speakers and phenomenal contributors to society. So I appreciate all the hard work you do and the teachers that you have as well.
So would you please come up and, come up so that we can take a picture with you and that we can present your awards?
Okay. Councilmember Montero has a presentation on the agenda. Go ahead, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, parking in some areas of the city has been a challenge, and the installation of the provincial parking has not alleviated the situation. We have been looking for innovative solution that will help residents who constantly experience parking frustration, especially at nighttime. Therefore, I am proposing a pilot project at the Jim Thorpe Park on Cordero Avenue side in order to see if my proposed solution will be effective at combating the frustration of finding parking at night. This past January, at the Ms. Valentine Business Expo, I met this gentleman, Shafad Abdallah, where he presented the idea of a smart parking solution and his, and his company, Panoramic, that you will learn in a few minutes, which conducts seemingly programs that has been successful in LA and Long Beach. Arnie and I have met Ms. Shafar several times, and we believe it is a concept that would like to, that we would like to explore in our city. If this pilot project is successful, we can help Ms. Shafar introduce it to many other unused parking lots in the city, such as churches, supermarkets, business lots, and more. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Shafar Abdallah, who will present his smart parking solution. And let me tell you that also on the news, metro stations, parking lots, almost everywhere in LA County, 20 of them have starting a $3 parking fee for people to park in their parking lot during the day before they take the metro link to their destination. So, Mr. Shafar, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Alex Montero, and welcome everyone here. I'm going to talk about what Alex described already pretty well.
Mr. Abdallah, speak on the mic, please. Put the mic close to you, please, thank you.
Yeah, so I want to speak about the Neighborhood Smart Parking Solution, which is launched by the company I run, Panoramic. So as you, as you can see, like news about smart cities, the future is smart parking, smart route, traffic routing to get congestion under control. This is where the cities are heading to tackle the problems for making their residents' life easier, more convenient and easier. And this is like one of the projects of smart cities. So the problem, as Alex just described, like in case of scarce areas, parking is really scarce, especially in high-density areas, such as apartments, buildings, multi-units, events, places of interest. And streets have unmanaged parking. So this leads to a parking situation which is not optimally utilized. So the, what, at Panoramic, what we are presenting is a solution, we actually become a marketplace where users can buy or subscribe to unused parking lots of businesses, such as churches, supermarkets, schools, parks, for overnight use. And the solution is called Panoramic Neighborhood Smart Parking. It consists of a mobile app, which is facing the consumer and for payment and subscription. And then for the businesses, there's a dashboard which they can log in and list their unused parking, parking spaces. We did some research on it, as Councilman Alex pointed out, that cities of Long Beach are already doing that. So actually, seems like they, they are already using this overnight parking as a feature for, for residents of Long Beach to allow them to park. But the solution is not very optimal. It's, it doesn't have the user experience which it can have in this day and age, where everybody's using Facebook and, you know, Airbnb, or Uber, or Lyft. So it has a manual payment system, which is inefficient, and it's ready to be disrupted with, for example, mobile payment, smarter operations, and marketing to help not only improve customer experience, but also scale it to different cities and hopefully across the US. Target audience for the, for what it is. For example, residents of dense areas, they face parking shortage. Now, one of the pilot projects which is starting at Jim Thorpe Park, which is proposed, that the unused parking spaces overnight can be, the residents can be allowed to park there, and essentially they subscribe and to those Jim Thorpe, for example, parking spaces at Jim Thorpe, and they are able to use it for their nightly parking. Similarly, once it is expanded, so churches and supermarkets, they also have unused parking spaces, especially overnight and even in other days of the time. So that can also be, you know, put on the marketplace, which Panoramic offers, and, and it's available to subscribe or, or to be, to be used. How is this going to work? So we will have available parking slots, which are numbered and assigned to subscriber. Then we will have enforcement signs, which is very common for any managed parking spaces, so that only paid subscribers can park overnight. And there's like no littering, parking your own risk, and no liability for that matter, and the user registration. So that's like the part where the user downloads app on your mobile phone, Android, iPhone, you're able to register it with life's car license information, your city address, and you will be assigned a parking space upon approval and paid fee. So this is like visually, like how it's going to work. There's a parking spot. Number one step is the user subscribe via app after registering. Number two step is user actually parks overnight. And then third, and then thirdly, subscription gets renewed, like every month or every year, whatever the subscription plan is. And parking admin gets a notification on his phone or dashboard that the spaces are being used. that the spaces are being utilized properly. So it's become more like a managed parking space. One scenario, which is a violation scenario, in which case the user is not abiding by the parking rules. For example, a subscriber finds his or her parking occupied when they drive to it. So the subscriber user reports a parking problem via the app, and parking admin gets notified, so is a towing company, and the illegal car parked is towed, which hopefully, you know, no one would want to be in that situation. But this is like how we're going to manage the parking. Features for users: cashless payment via mobile, parking spot bookmark, so you can basically remember your car parking spot. Hopefully, you won't forget it. Time alert. For example, in the morning, you need to leave the car, let's say at 7:00 a.m., so notification can be sent over your phone. Last-minute ride options, which means that if the parking is like three or four blocks away, in that case, the parking... You can take an Uber or Lyft, which will be available within the app to get you to Uber or Lyft, so some kind of collaboration. Now, maps and car navigation. This is like a future down the road that it will be integrated in the map. For example, maybe in Google, you can search those parking spaces. Or car navigation systems will have these integrated solutions. I think Heather Wall just told me that Tesla is actually interested in getting this system integrated, which is great news, and so are the other OEMs or other car manufacturers down the road. So promotional coupon of local businesses. So we want to promote local businesses, so that you eat, drink in the Hawthorne community and help the businesses as well as the city. So it will be available within that app. Feature for the businesses. So this is like a business site. There's a dashboard for parking usage, the patterns of that. They have allowance to set tiered price and timings for parking slots. For example, some of the parking spots are available only in night, while, for example, in Hawthorne Boulevard, they might be available during the daytime also. So they will have an ability to essentially have a tiered parking timing for that parking slot. Notification of illegal parking, which we already described, and promotions, local business promotions via coupon, we talked about. So team and partners. There's a lot of traction around it as we are about to start the pilot project, finalize agreement. Parking Company America, which basically has thirty-five thousand spaces managed, they are actually... They approached me to actually... They want to buy off the whole company. But since I want to, you know, I live around the area, my kids go here, I want this solution to be offered to the residents of this so that they can have the first take of this, and their life can be convenient by having this parking solution. And I'm also working with, you know, companies like Parking Company of America, so which can actually scale this business just beyond Hawthorne. So that's... Questions?
Here's the chair. I have some questions.
And before the question, let me just put it simple, right? Let's say the Jim Thorpe Park on Cordero Side, we're going to have thirty-five parking spaces that people can park there from 9:00 a.m. until 7:00 a.m. So the people will download the app on your smartphone, and basically, on that app, you can subscribe to a parking space on Cordero because those parking slots are going to be marked or have a number, for example, like Mr. Shafar said. So the person goes and subscribes for his or her parking space and pay for them the thirty-dollar fee monthly. So it'll be one dollar a night to park over there. And that app basically continues to track who can park and who cannot park. And like he said, if somebody parked there illegally, so the subscriber, based on the dashboard, can contact the dashboard through the app or they can call the tow truck company and move the cars away from there because that is his or her parking space that is assigned to. So what he was trying to say about if somebody say can park on Jim Thorpe, and then if they got to go two blocks or three blocks, if he or she doesn't want to walk, they can call Uber or Lyft through that app, through dashboard, so they can give them a ride home instead of walking. So and that Jim Thorpe, it will be putting signs that this overnight parking is only by subscription. So that means somebody have to subscribe via phone or via, you know, computer to pay for his or her parking on a monthly basis or annual basis. When he said about Long Beach right now is charging three dollars to park on the street overnight. But they have to have one-year subscription. So they have to pay three hundred and thirty-six dollars annually to park on the street in Long Beach. L.A. is doing the same thing. So now you've got, you know, the metro is doing the same thing. So it is a pilot project because, like I said, there is a lot of unused parking lots in this city. We've got thirty-seven churches. And some churches have good parking lots that are unavailable to the public. So if this project works, this pilot, then we will license Mr. Shafar to go around and marketing his program, the parking program, through the parking lots, to the churches, to the businesses, like the supermarkets. And I don't want to mention the schools because the school is complicated. But we can start with the churches, with the supermarkets, you know, and other businesses that have parking lots that is locked at night and don't allow nobody to park there. So it's a way later on for organizations and churches to make money. Because if you have a thousand space, right? If you rent that space for two dollars a night, you can generate a million dollars a year on a thousand space. It's a million dollars a year. So but of course, you know, the company will take one-third and the two-thirds goes to the business because they have to manage the dash, they have to manage the app and everything like that. So and eventually, this program also have a sensors. If we put sensors, then it can do more things, like notify the police or telling us how the flowing of traffic is moving on the streets, how the pollution, and identified gas leak, power outage. So all of this could be in the future. But right now, we're doing simple, no sensor less. So by subscription, that will put sign, and people will sign up via smartphone, and they'll be able to park overnight from 9:00 p.m. until 7:00 a.m., and the app will notify them, "It's time for you to move your car," because it's 7:00 a.m. if they're still there. Okay? So, question?
Okay, so I have some questions about how it's administered. So the person who wants to park there pays every month?
Right.
Any particular time of month? Or do they set it up like, say, if you set it up on the fifteenth of month, the fifteenth of the next month it comes due again?
Basically, there will be two modes of payment. One is you pay monthly and auto-subscribe. So every month, it's like auto-subscription, whichever you select, whichever day you select. The other is annual, basically you select an annual, and you pay upfront. You might have a good discount on that.
And who administers this system? Is it your company that administers it?
Yes.
So the app is controlled by your company?
Right.
Okay. And how is it enforced? So if somebody comes and parks in their spot, what happens?
Yeah, so for example, if somebody comes and parks in the spot of the people who's already subscribed, in that case, the subscriber finds it out, he or she drives it, "Oh, my parking is occupied." So she or he opens the app, reports it, and at this time, the two notifications are sent. One is to towing truck, as well as the parking admin, who is generally like, let's say it's a church parking or whatever parking. So and the towing truck, they can even call from the app to the towing truck, which will come and enforce, because there will be signs there that tow at your own expense if you're in violation of this parking.
So the car will be towed?
Right.
Okay. See if I had any. Okay. I think that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Good.
All right. You know, I've got like seven questions somewhere. I'll wait. Sorry, brother. I love you and everything, Councilman. We're going to get this right.
I'm sure that, you know, you've got some bugs that you're going to have to work out. I mean, you don't have a perfect plan immediately.
Yeah.
Trial and error and see what works.
It will be rolled out in phases, right? Not all the features will be available in the first scope.
And I imagine that you're going to be dealing primarily with property owners, so they have... They can say yes or no, and it's not the city that's going to... Or part of your program includes some of the city parking available.
Right.
Right, okay. Now, you know, I attended a conference not too long ago, Southern California Association of Governments, you know, and everybody was talking about issues like this. And they used a phrase about disruptors. It really stuck on my mind about things that all of a sudden, somebody comes along with a brand-new idea that may appear crazy, and all of a sudden, it changes how we conduct our lives and how we conduct our business. And the example that they used was Uber and Lyft.
Right.
You know, that overnight, they created a system that, you know, helps people, transports people, you know.
Absolutely.
So I... Sometimes it's so simple. It's so simple, but nobody thinks about it.
Right.
And another example that they used was, there was a particular corner, where you have four corners and a lot of people getting run over.
Right.
And they just put a traffic circle, and it just changed that whole problem.
Right.
So, yeah, I'm kind of curious to see how that would work, you know, because I can certainly see a lot of parking lots in churches, you know, markets. You know, you could do something with properties like that, so.
Right, absolutely.
But, yeah, no, I think that maybe you're one of those disruptors. I don't know.
I hope so.
Well, Mike, let me tell you this, like, for example, the Parking Company of America have offered him two million dollars for his idea.
Sell it.
But he doesn't want to sell it yet because, like you said, he lives in Hawthorne. So he wants to make sure to see that if this parking work here can work anywhere, right?
That takes a lot of guts to pass that out.
So they already have offered him two million dollars, and he have said, you know, wait a minute.
Good for you.
Do you want to go first? I'll let you go first. Go ahead.
Thank you, guys. All right, this sounds very interesting. Okay, and you know, like you said, there's disruptors, new ideas that will hit or miss. So ultimately, I want to... How many other cities is this program being tested in? Or how many... Where is it active? Do you have any... Or this is the first of its kind?
As I said, I'm still doing more research on it. Right now, I know for sure City of Long Beach has a similar solution, but it's not tech-enabled. It's very manual. So they offer overnight parking, but they don't offer it the way we are offering.
You don't have an app.
And I think City of L.A., Alex Montero probably mentioned that.
Okay, so this would be his first of its kind. It's a proto... What do you call it?
Prototype.
Prototype, correct?
Project, pilot project.
Oh, no, no. I mean, I'm not opposed to that. There's a lot of considerations.
Right.
Okay, you mentioned, what is the times of the overnight parking? What's the window that people can park?
Yeah, so it really depends on from the businesses or which parking is available. For example, ideally, it could be six or seven p.m., or it could be nine p.m. in case of Jim Thorpe Park, and it lasts till seven a.m. or around that time. So for example, I feel like the churches should be able to offer, if they are, around six p.m., which is much more convenient for the users, or some of the marketplaces which close at five p.m.
So the slots need to be determined based on the groups, right? Say, but one consideration also is that the churches, they might not... They have various things going into the evening. And the thing is that sometimes they have a specific schedule, but then a specific season comes in where they have like Easter, like specific classes that they offer. And so they might say six to... They might say six to seven in the morning. But then like there's going to be disruptors in the schedule
Right.
that need to be considered. So then the thing is, is the... If you have... You need to consider, I mean, I've come from an engineering background. I kind of think of these things and, you know, just the first draft, the second draft, iterations.
Right.
You've got to consider like what their schedules are.
Right.
And then you also have to... The issue of enforcement, when... They need those spaces available because they have something, a big event, that they need to have that parking space available, but all of a sudden, it's taken up by the parking because some of these spots, these parking lots are probably going to be very popular.
Right.
Okay, so a consideration is, you're going to have to figure out how to just kind of tie that into the program.
Yeah.
The next issue is, what if you do have people that are parking there, and the churches and the city needs that parking available? Because we have an event, they have an event. Who's going to enforce this? Are you going to have like your group of people on those little segways running around? Or is it... Does it fall on us as a city? Does it fall on, you know, the people that own those parking lots to tow away all the cars? Because, you know, they... I mean, that's a consideration, right, guys? Go ahead.
To the church.
To the church? You said to the church? You said to the church?
Okay, I'm talking about the church, through the chair. Okay. So I think it is just a presentation of concept. If it actually lift up to that level to go to be expanded in churches and businesses, it has nothing to do with the city. We are not involved in that.
Okay.
So the presentation tonight is about thirty-five parking spaces at Jim Thorpe Park from 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. as a pilot project. And if it is successful, so it is going to be... We were considering if council is willing to test it. You know, maybe we can test drive it for a year to see whether it picks up, you know, if people are interested and subscribe to it. And also, with regards to other places that, Mayor, you just mentioned, yeah. I mean, if a church is not available, then they don't get into agreement with that company. It's a mutual agreement between that place and the company. And also, it has to do with their schedule. It could be, church could make its parking lot available six months a year, for example, only. So it only has to do with them and their availability. But the test drive that I spoke to Councilmember Montero three months ago was only to be... And then this is the only place for the city. We don't have any parking lot, by the way. We don't have any parking lot to allocate for this. We never considered, I just heard for the first time, Long Beach streets, for example. We never considered to assign parking space on public street to anybody. I don't think we can do this legally. Parking, I mean, curb parking or center median parking cannot be assigned to anybody. It belonged to public, okay? So we are not considering that. So the only purpose of this pilot project was limited to thirty-five parking spaces at Jim Thorpe Park to see if it is practical and successful. Then after that, it is between the company and other entities. And even enforcement part of it has nothing to do with us. We cannot police it.
No, and forgive me, I mean, guys, really, geez, I'm sorry. I'm just looking forward how we can apply that. This sounds like an exciting idea.
Through the chair.
A couple more things.
Thank you.
So, you know, considerations of who will enforce this, obviously. Well, that's... I got brought up by myself. Who will identify the spaces? Do you have an example of the app that could be viewed, or is that something you're still developing?
Yes, the app is under development. We have like listing spaces, which we are working, for example, e-commerce and other sites. There's already in place for other businesses. It's not meant for parking, but it's meant for their inventory, something similar to it. It's already running, actually. I can show you that example.
Okay. Do you have a line diagram of like the different functions that are in the app?
Yes.
So I could take a look at that?
Oh, yeah.
That'd be great. I like to take a look at the bubbled...
Yeah, I have it.
That'd be nice. And this is an exciting idea.
Yeah.
It's phenomenal.
Yeah.
I think it's something that I'm already thinking ahead. So excuse me, guys, I mean, I think that there's a lot of things that could come of this. And obviously, Pet Valdez is interested in this, right? From the Parking Company of America, so he's been... If he's interested, it means it's probably something that he sees is going to be greater than we could expect, so. No, thanks. Yeah, you have my full support under this pilot program.
And just remember that parking is a big issue in Hawthorne, especially in some Menilo Garden area and some other in North Hawthorne, some other Ramona track. So we constantly, every day, we have people coming and complaining about parking. So we're trying to figure it out, a solution. And this is just one of many that I hope that we can come to an agreement because if this pilot project, you know, works, then we can say, if people are interested, so then we can have a product that he can go sell it to the churches, and then the churches can put all the parameters, okay? No parking availability on Easter week, whatever, something like that. So they can do a whole... So they can do a whole thing of, of, you know, detailed program for each individual needs and of the, of the business.
Right.
So they would not allow people to park that every month, Sunday during the, you know? So it's a lot of things that be done, but this is just a pilot. And believe it or not, uh, I, I told Mr. Shafar that if, if, if I see that Jim Thor Corderi is doing well, I'm gonna let him test it at the Hawthorne Muslaj parking lot. Because we have people park there illegal at nighttime.
Oh, okay.
See? So, they're like, are you, we're thinking, we're thinking, because I want to solve this parking problem in the city of Hawthorne.
I, I want it to work. You know, I really do. I, I want your project, I, I think that parking has been something that we talk about here constantly and we're trying to find a solution for it. And who knows, maybe you got the magic number, you know? But when I think about like the park or where you're gonna start that, you know, I drive by there quite a bit at night and they got people playing, uh, softball, or, or maybe the Legion may have, uh, an issue. How, how is that gonna work?
Uh, yeah, typically, the park is open till nine. So they're okay with, you know, playing till nine.
You got parking for the park.
Yeah, right now, yeah, right now, uh, you cannot park in, not park after nine PM. If do you daddy pu, uh, the, you will have a ticket.
Right.
So, and we are not going to use Corderi West, you know, that where the Hawthorne 街头 society and the post, that parking lot is not gonna be used.
So you're talking about the one behind.
I'm near the east side of the, of Jim Thorpe Park on Corderi.
Okay, with all the apartments in front.
Exactly, and, and the other side are all the apartments.
Right.
Okay, because we got a lot of apartments there, so, and, and believe it or not, even my cleaning lady that go cleans the castle at night, sometime they put a ticket because she parked there half the night. So, and then, uh, like I said, and the other parking lot that I'm thinking about, it is right there, because Hawthorne Muslaj is between two big apartment complex, the Jenkins apartment and the other. So people go there and park illegal, and then it's a big problem. So, so that's could be a solution later on, that we could come up and say, we are seat of good neighbor, we try to solve the parking issue, and let's talk to some other potential partners that will be willing to accept this program. If, if it's success.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, uh. You have a question? No, no, I'm done.
Go ahead.
Um, so I, I was, I'm kind of into this space there, as you kind of know. Um, so when I saw the presentation again, um, I thought it was a little different, um, the technology behind it. Um, you're still in what kind of phase?
Yeah, so, um, we are essentially right now working on, the team is already working on the mobile.
Funding wise, what are you on?
Oh, the funding wise.
Seed.
So, uh, right, right now, I'm looking for seed, actually.
So you're just basically from the beginning?
Right, uh, I have some other businesses who have invest, who, who are doing, I'm doing some pilot with them, but that's like the company cash flow, right? But I'm looking for, uh, seed, yes.
So the build-out for the app would take you how long?
Um.
Realistically?
Re, realistically, it, it is a function of funding as well, uh, I would say, like, because I can paralyze, paralyze with engineers. But if I have limited funding, I can just hire one or two engineers, you know, with my cash flow right now. So depending on that, so let's say, it might take, uh, fall of this year or early next year to launch.
The March?
No, no, so, for example, uh, realistically, it might take like, say, October, November.
Like to have the pilot program up and running?
Up and running, oh, no, yeah, November time.
What's a rough estimate of?
Between, let's say, November and January.
Of what, this year?
Of, of this year, November and January, yeah.
And a working app and everything like that?
Yes, January for sure, yeah.
Have you done a lot, a lot of market research on your app idea?
Uh, I have done, as I said, some, I have some, like verified some existing solutions.
So the reason why is, I've, I've tried to do this app before, uh, and that's the reason why I said Tesla and SpaceX, we are working on something.
Right.
To create some kind of automated shuttle service.
Right.
Uses the same kind of tech. Now, the reason why I stopped, not for the SpaceX or Tesla project, but for making my own parking app, is the amount of competition.
Right.
There's a tremendous amount of parking apps available now for cities to pick up. There's, uh, there's one that was recently, who, who's caught me by surprise is Best Parkway? They're in two hundred cities and a hundred and fifteen airports. So it's a, technology is there, that's why I was kind of waiting until everyone kind of finished, until they come in and like stress that.
Right.
I don't think you've done enough market research because the technology is already there and providing to a lot of cities, so to, for you to kind of come in and you want us to wait until you build out the app and to get funding first, so you haven't gotten funding yet.
Well, as I said, um, I'm already doing some pilots with other, other businesses, so I'm gonna use that to basically get some of my resources on this project.
And how much do you estimate the cost of your app to develop?
Well, um, I mean, there's a mi, minimum boiler line in the, you know, top line, so, uh, it's probably will take around, um, you know, two, two hundred, two fifty K just to get the app out the door.
Two hundred what?
Two, two hundred K.
Yeah, it's on the cheap end.
Well, yeah.
Uh, so I think it'll be a little more.
Well, I'm saying this is very cheap end.
Okay.
But then, if I really want to set for the scale, get the right, right scale and all that, I'm already talking to some investor, for example, Parking Company of America, we're already in talks for closing, uh, seed round. Uh, then it, it might be actually more, it will take about, you know, uh, two million, something around that, uh, one, one point five to two million.
Mm-hmm. I'm, I'm, no, no, I, I, maybe I'm different because I studied this area already, a, a lot, um, and I knew about the technology way before. Um, it's just, there's a lot of competition already out there. These apps are user-friendly, tech-side, and it's the same tech. I thought it was a little different. And that's why I said, oh, if it was different, yeah, then yes, Tesla would want to have.
So, one thing is that, uh, most of the apps just work for parking garages, you know, they just kind of provide a convenience way of doing, uh, connecting, you know, finding the park. But what, what we are doing right now here is, we are actually working with the zoning and city information.
They do the same thing already.
Yeah, so.
Guarantee it, because I've, that's why I stopped doing it.
Right, well.
Because they already have it out there, and they're already like destroying the competition, like the whole disruptive thing, it happened a long time ago. It's just that we're now, on, it's now, the technology is cheap enough for now, people in cities can actually utilize it. So for you to start now, I mean, we could do, uh, it would be risky for the city in, in initial phase, especially when you're getting your seed out money, to kind of risk that liability, especially when you're still building out the app and there's still bugs that you haven't even gotten to yet. So that was the only hesitation I would have, of starting so quickly with a pilot program, that the fact that we didn't take enough time to study the market, we just kind of shotguned into an idea. There's a lot of apps that are robust, that are cheap.
I want to respond.
For the city to go on.
Well, uh, to the chair. Well, Mr. Shafar is, is willing to actually starting this pilot project and get the seed money on his own, okay? So the city liability is zero. We don't have, we're not gonna put no money, uh, because, you know, of course, you know, uh, so it's gonna be zero dollar from the city and zero liability at this stage. Uh, so he's willing to go out there and create the app, and we can start this pilot project, even we talked about maybe even October, but, uh, so maybe October is, you know, through January. So, so he's giving him time to set up the app and, and then, you know, to, to, to start the pilot project. But for us, it's just.
I still, I still understand the logic. I, I get that, because the second you start it, I get, the, business works this way. The second one city says, in this, on the South Bay, we're gonna start this parking app idea, I guarantee you, every parking app company is going to come to the city of Hawthorne, and they're going to pitch to you saying, we're already so robust, and already have your city mapped, mapped out.
That's good, because, because maybe that's what we need. So, because this conversation, nobody have come yet, right? So if you don't start something to incentivize some other people to come, so if they come to us and say, we have this thing, we have this test, we'll listen, because maybe that's something that we'll learn, and then maybe, you know, because his pilot project, because he's the one have come forward, because I brought him here, because, you know, uh, can say, why not? Because this is, it's a, a smart parking solution that we having issue.
You're also partnered in with.
Hold on, that people coming to, to us every day, nobody have so, I've been here for twenty years and people been complaining about parking, and nobody have come up with any solution how to solve the problem of parking.
There is, you're just looking at the wrong locations.
Wait, one at a time, folks, guys, one at a time, just complete that.
The thing is, is just, is just a, a pilot project, is a concept that we're going to, thirty-five parking space that's going to come up and see.
With an app, we're still trying to.
One at a time, folks.
To get developed. How does that, how's that not risky for the city?
Guys, one at a time. Let them complete it, you're gonna get a chance right here.
All right, but when you have a project that is where somebody offer him two million dollar, so you know his concept is, is on the money, right? So he's willing to help us out, create this little pilot project, and he's willing to go get the seed, the money that to put the app, and then for our residents to take advantage of it, I don't see no problem with it. So it, 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 like I said, is a pilot project, it's not like the city is putting a million dollar or fifty, nothing, zero dollar. So we need to help the people of Hawthorne, and if we don't do nothing, then we fail in our jobs.
Okay, uh, go ahead, if you want to respond. Yeah, we're not, we're not failing our job, and then the, the smartest thing to do, it comes, coming from the business standpoint, if you're going to invest money or invest resource or time, and especially for Hawthorne, you already know the next couple of years, we have no time to mess around. So the fact is that we're gonna take a chance on an undeveloped app.
We invest in zero dollar.
Instead of, we, we can do it faster, why don't we actually look at an idea that would actually help and create results faster?
So bring it to us then.
Well, we can start looking at it now.
Bring it to us. So nobody, like I said, nobody have brought nothing. So if you have something there that you can think it work faster, and it's much more already integrated on the system, so bring it to, bring it to us, because we're willing to find a solution of parking. And so far, we have not so find a solution, and like I said, I've been sitting over there on the other side for twenty years, and parking has been an issue, and you know that I drove, I drove every day, Manila Gardens, North Hawthorne, this street twenty-four seven, and there is problem, parking problem, people fight about parking, so nobody have done nothing. So if there is something out there, better, bring it.
It's not that done nothing.
Hold on, guys, hold on, one at a time.
One second, uh, the, the problem was this.
Hold on, guys, hold on, guys, I need it one at a time because it's the back and forth.
Yeah, no, you go ahead.
Um.
Go ahead.
Don't interrupt me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, what's it? What was, what was I saying the last second? Uh, we're not. Mike? Mike, please. Lost my train of thought. Mike, go ahead first.
Well, listen, uh, good people can disagree. Okay, so, you know.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, it's a good.
A good spirited debate, you know?
Yeah, no one's angry.
Um.
Just business.
All right, like, guys, look, guys, seriously.
We're not, always we're stressing at one point.
I need you guys to not go back and forth. Every person gets the floor, whether you're disagreeing, I'm not enjoying this myself, actually.
Okay.
I need you guys to wait for complete thoughts and then you go.
Yeah, if, uh, if the city doesn't have a liability, if we can establish that the city doesn't have a liability, and you're gonna do all the groundwork, you gotta, you, you know, you gotta move out there and find places to park your cars. You know, you're gonna do that, I'm not gonna do that, we're not gonna do that.
Right.
You know? Um, and, uh, you got a good idea, and there may be a million people out there, but he's the one that's here talking right now, you know what I mean?
Well, there, well.
I, I, you know, he's the one talking, and he's the one with the idea, and, uh, want a piece of a parking lot somewhere in the backstreet somewhere to, you know, test something. Um, it's his loss, un, unless I see, uh, a liability for, for the city, you know? Um, and maybe he'll get the ball rolling and he won't get anywhere, like a lot of people do. Got a good idea, but you don't have, you know, the reason why a lot of these great ideas don't happen is because the people don't have the capital to make them happen. You know, you're gonna have to do knock on doors and talk people into your program, a church, whoever, you know? Um, so I admire the entrepreneur that has the, you know, what, to come up with a new idea, get in front of a city council and sell it to them, and sell it to them. Because I'm a salesman, you're a salesman, you gotta sell your idea. But your idea has to produce. If it doesn't produce, it's on him, there's nobody else, you know, there's nobody else coming around saying, hey, do this. And, and, and it may be, there may be. But, uh, but the one thing I want to close with is that good people can disagree, you know?
Councilmember, go ahead.
Uh, so, so the, the other issue was, when I was bringing up was, um, the reason why I was a little hesitant is the amount of market research done ahead of time before the presentation was made. And that's why I waited to the very end to, to, to talk, because I wanted to see, because what I'm putting you through right now is exactly what you're gonna get through when you're doing your funding phases, and you know this, they're actually gonna be worse than me. I'm barely giving you any heat, but they will rip your technology apart when you're in this funding program. So when you're going in to get this seed money, you have, do not go in there saying that there's no other app or I'm a, uh, what's, what's, what's that word, word, a disruptor? Because they're going to do the same thing I did, is they're going to come at you, because they know you did not do your research, because you said this was groundbreaking and the first of its kind, and the only technology that has it paying on, no, don't, you, you're already shooting yourself in the foot, you didn't start yet.
So, uh, so about the market such, let me just have few, few thoughts over here. I've been working with city on this one for at least six months. I've been basically analyzing market trend, researching what is out there. Um, there could be some technology out there which helps the payment. For example, uh, you can see, uh, the park marked with, uh, meters, and you can pay there, you can use a credit card. Now, like, for example, Park Mobile offer this, um, space that you can actually have garages, uh, essentially like, uh, you can either pay via, you know, their big, big booths there, or, uh, you can even like get alert on a phone for your parking, uh, thing. And they're working with, uh, their own, it's a market, Parking Company of America, when they approached me, we talked about for hours about this approach, they have thirty-five thousand managed parking spaces across, uh, US. Uh, the parking, the parking itself is very, space is very fragmented, it's owned and run by families, uh, and, uh, essentially each has its own way of operating, operations. They're using some tech, some of them are not using it, some of them are in fancy using tech. Uh, the big, um, cash flows are, of course, the parking garages, the event parking, for, people are focusing on that. Now, I come from the point of view, I live around this area, I know the problems of the city of Hawthorne, because of the fact that I'm live, I live here, and I've seen like the high-density population has this problem, where you could actually, you wanna take an approach from the point that you wanna give them overnight parking availability of unused parking space, which is gonna make their life much easier. So I'm gonna actually.
Which exists. That's what I'm trying to tell you, that if you're going into these meetings and you're going to pitch for a seed round, and you're gonna tell them that, I can give you ten apps right now to, for you to go look at, and the technology is, there's nothing put on the ground, they're using the GPS in the phone to have your phone locked in, you're just kind of like Uber and Lyft. To have your phone locked in. You're just kinda like Uber and Lyft. So it, it, I'm trying to figure out.
So, so let, let me, let me complete, so let, let me complete. So, uh, the, uh, the app you, which you are talking about, I have been actually, uh, following lots of this app over the many months. And it feel like, um, it's not just about the tech, it's like about the whole solution, the way you work with the city, you work with the businesses. You go and you basically like try to get a schedule of workable, flexible schedule around it. And you can actually launch your program, sell your program to them, just like, uh, you know, we are working with the city right now to have a pilot program. Now, all, I've, I've done this before. I'm, I'm a student entrepreneur. I've sold my company, already raised a million dollar, like four, five years ago. Sold it to Honest Company. It's not first time I'm doing it. So, uh, I know like how this, uh, the market research and the VC business works.
How big was the first one? You said a million?
I raised a million dollar and I sold it to the Honest, we sold it to Honest Company, uh, like two, three years ago. Here's in Los Angeles, a unicorn, Honest Company, one billion dollar, two billion dollar valuation. Yeah, so, uh, and I have been talking to multiple advisors, not just one, uh, dozens of advisor on this over the past many months. And, uh, uh, you know, the, the reason I want to pivot along this is that I feel like there's a big opportunity, especially for the resident. I think though it's a win-win situation for more for the residents, how, how this will be available to, uh, to them for, for, for the use, uh, you know? It's not, it's not about the tech. I mean, you can get an app running in like two, three months. It's, it's, it's not just about developing an app, right? If you have the right resources. It's more about like how you provide the solution, workable solution and you.
The user friendly aspect of the app and the platform.
User friendly as well as the dashboard, no, for example.
It's all part of the user friendly aspect of the app.
Right, so convenience, the dashboard, the admin interface, how it's gonna.
But those exist already on other, so what the question I'm gonna ask, I'm treating like a congressional hearing. When you were doing your initial build out for this app, and I know you've done your research before, are you, are you telling me that you were saying that no other technology except yours, when you're making this presentation, that you were the only one that existed?
So that's exactly not what I meant to say. If, if you, if you take it like that, it's, it's not like there's no parking payment solution. There is parking payment solution. Now, there, there will be competition. Any market which has a viable solution has a competition, which is really healthy, which is good. Now whoever, uh, you know, gets that solution first and provides a meaningful, more comprehensive solution, I think those are the big winners. For example, Airbnb. This is like, you can term it like Airbnb for parking, right? And, uh, um, so the thing is, how would you, you, you know, convince the businesses to actually give up their unused parking space and make it available? So you have to have this whole bunch of solution. And I think that's where this niche solution is, is gonna pivot. And we already have a working omnicommer solution for their customers who are paying for it. So all we tried to do is we tried to pivot it around, uh, the parking aspect of it, the mobile paid payment, the listing. All of that is, we already have customers which are paying.
Who are your three top competitors? That way I can know whether you did your research or not. Your three top competitors?
Well, with Park Mobile.
Okay.
So it was bought by, uh, uh, the BMW. Uh, there is, uh, Akami, Akam, Akami, uh, Mobile. Uh, it's still working on, uh, and then, um, for example, there, there's our, there are other fragmented, uh, parking, Park, Parkopedia. For example, Parkopedia is a big one which actually enlist all the parking spaces. It, 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 it becomes like a marketplace in general, but it does not have the nitty gritty integrations with the businesses, with the cities, with their, with their rules, with their tiered approach and all that.
I'm just saying before you go out to seed round, don't say that because best parking and Parker and Spark Hero and Parking Panda work on cities and airports.
Let's, uh, start winding it down, folks.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's, it's a good, it's, and it's a good idea, but it's part of like if creating smart cities. That's one thing that we're always trying to, looking to is how to make City Hall more tech savvy. And we've sat down there with, uh, John Ramirez in the back, we're thinking about setting a committee to do just that for City Hall. But the problem is we have to go after established companies because the technology, it's sensitive. So we can't like just, if we wanna jump into an idea, we can't just, oh, pilot program, oh, we'll see what the liability is. We don't know what the liability is because we haven't done it. But these other companies have already written out the contracts and have done this already and before and know the liabilities and know the lawsuits that occurred from these interactions already. So I'm just saying we should look at more research when deciding when to start.
All right.
And for you to, please, if you're going for that seed round, and especially if you're going out to.
Are you gonna help fund, fund us?
Okay, council member Montero.
Sit down and talk.
Let's do it.
Uh, we have had a lot of meetings, uh, with Mr. Shafar, uh, since January. So it's been almost five months that we've been back and forth, back and forth. You know, Arnie have got involved, even the.
Even Arnie's not confident. He's still, he's his liability.
Hold on guys.
Our, our city attorney, uh, Russell have, have looked into the, into, into potential agreement. But basically, like I said, there is no liability for the city, is not the city responsibility. It's his responsibility just to, for us to come up with a solution. And that is like we call it a pilot project. It can be successful or he can, or it will fail. So isn't a solution, because like I said, we need to come up with solution because this is what we got elected for, to bring ideas to forefront. How we solve the constituent problems. Parking is a problem. So we try have to find solution. And this could be one of them, it could be many of them. So like I said, if there is some other companies out there, so I want to see them bring forward and let's talk about it because we have to come up a solution because like I said, the city do not have money to build public, public parking. We don't have the money to build buildings for people to park. And we have to find solution. Solution sometime is build partnership, build partnership with other people, other business to solve the city issue. Because like I said, Hawthorne is not a rich city. We don't have, you know, five hundred billion dollar reserve. We don't have thirty million dollar reserve. So we need to come up with ideas that is gonna solve problems that does not cost the city money, but it's built on partnership. So thank you, Mr. Shafar for coming in because our ten minutes has been long time. So thank you very much.
All right. So I'm gonna close this out and I appreciate you guys, the health contractor. Again, we need to make sure that we, the discussion needs to be tame and, uh, make sure it's in sequence.
It's constructive.
Yeah, no, it's constructive, but sir, uh, thank you for coming out here. You are a Hawthorne resident. Um, I do know that there are companies that have parking apps out there and I acknowledge that, what my council member colleague says. Um, and I, I said, you noticed, I was kind of critical in my questions. Um, but the concept, do we know if those companies out there have a Airbnb type of, uh, situation? Where they go to the private parking lots and set up, and set up parking spaces? That might be different than what the parking apps are out there.
Absolutely.
I think the parking apps are more from what I understand, and if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. Um, they might be more for the public streets and for municipal buildings that are city owned. Apart from that, the relationship say like you want to establish?
Right.
So the thing is, all right.
Look at, look at best parking before you listen to.
Let's talk offline.
Okay, best parking is the one you have to look at.
Council member Hua.
Exact same layout.
Council member Hua, I need you just to keep the order, please.
Put council, hold on, Mr. Me, excuse me. Put council radar on your advisory, advisory team.
Sure. He's, he's on already.
So going to put him on your advisory.
I like critical comments here.
So maybe the, uh, we, we're looking for a solution for the city of Hawthorne and maybe the, maybe we can modify what your intention is to come here to seek a testing ground for your application as opposed to the whole parking solution for the city of Hawthorne. If that satisfies everything we're saying, okay.
Yes.
But I'm, first of all, I'm going to, I'm willing, and I hope the rest of my council is willing to support a local entrepreneur who has an idea that they wanna develop within their own city. For that, I commend you, sir. Thank you for being here.
Appreciate that.
Next item? What's the, what's the next item? Okay.
They made a mistake on that.
Okay, I would like to call city manager Arnold Schadberg. Oh.
And director.
Council member Hajar Hua has a presentation. I think he's gonna get heat right now.
I come after.
All right, guys.
I'm giving you guys heat.
Yeah. City manager Arnold Schadberg.
Yes.
Feliz Lopez.
I'm waiting for our finance director to come.
Yeah, right?
And people have easily come up and try to set up parking structures. That's the easy thing to do. That's, they, they always come up, a lot of these companies, so. We don't necessarily, we can't afford to do that necessarily. Unless the owner of RFK decides to do something, maybe he could just put up a whole parking system right there. He doesn't do anything. Right? All right, let's go.
Okay, um, before our finance director, uh, starts, uh, presentation and go over all the dollar figure amounts, I wanna ask the city council, um, that what was it that we started four years ago? Um, because you know, not everybody is an accountant, not everybody, uh, has a financial background. What is it, what was the easy way that we started to monitor the budget? We started in fifteen, sixteen. It's a quiz, pop quiz.
Advisory committee?
No cheating. Okay, you're absolutely right. We started with bank statements, right? Okay, so, so this is what we did. We started, uh, with providing you with bank statements. This is what you can always ask. And I always promoted, I always focus on it every budget year. When we started this from fifteen, sixteen, city council, please ask for bank statements. Bank statements don't lie. And this way you can monitor regardless of how many thousands of dollar figures that Feliz is going to, uh, go to do for you. But bank statement is an easy way for you to see where we were last year, where we are this year and make a easy comparison. Please, uh, Feliz, go to the next. Okay, so, uh, this is the full figure, right?
Yes.
This is the PDF?
Yes.
No wonder, okay. So you have it before you, the yellow highlighted one, uh, this is Bank of the West checking account. We have thirty-three million nine hundred, nine thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollar in that, in that account. Okay? So, uh, mayor, uh, so when I, when I say about bank statements, you, you, you should have last year's, uh, budget in front of you. So you can make a comparison and also next year. Okay, uh, we go to the next slide. Okay, next slide is showing local agency investment fund LEF, which has a rate of return of two, uh, point forty-five percent right now. And, uh, we have a total of twelve million seven hundred thirty-four thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars in the LEF account. Next one. Next one is multi-bank that through our treasurer, uh, we were able, uh, to invest for the first time in decades. Uh, basically meaning set aside. Uh, right now we have six million nine hundred seventy-one thousand dollar investment in that multi-bank. And, uh, this is what Treasurer Patterson was sharing with you last time about, uh, the interest that it accumulated, which exceeded two hundred thousand dollar. Um, so what comes next before we go to next slide? Okay, you have bank statements. Now what? What comes next? What is it that you wanna chase it to see, okay, where we are, how we are doing, what's the meaning of all this?
It's bank.
Cash reserve, yes. It's the cash report. So let's go to cash report. So why we have this? Because these checking accounts and LEF accounts and, uh, of course, the multi-bank reserve is all general fund, but checking account and LEF account includes also restricted funds or grants into it. So you wanna see, uh, you know, basically chase, uh, general fund where we are. So as you see in this, uh, general fund cash report, um, as of March thirty-first, we had about thirty million dollar in, uh, in, uh, general fund and twenty-three million dollar of, uh, restricted funds. Grants and restricted funds. So, uh, according to, um, the, uh, anti, uh, the projection uh, that finance worked on, we anticipate paying thirty million dollar, uh, by end of June of this fiscal year. Uh, and, uh, bring another twenty-two point seven million dollar revenue, which brings us to close to two, twenty-three million dollar general fund cash reserve. Uh, closing this fiscal year. So, uh, this is a quick version of the state of the budget for the city council. And again, I can never over emphasize next year, you want to see this general fund cash reserve there. This tells you, the bank, combination of bank statements and general fund cash report, which we started from two thousand fifteen, sixteen, tells you where we are, how we are doing. Are we doing healthy? Is, is this going to be, stay where it is? Hopefully, is it going to be increased? But you never wanna see this going down. You don't want this to be decreased. This is important. Thank you so much for your attention. Uh, I ask, I ask our finance director to go over the budget details.
Okay, I'm gonna go over each department, uh, summary. Um, if you have any questions, just go ahead and stop me. Um, so for the city council, you'll see that we have a decrease. Um, this is related to, um, new council members not electing to have health coverage. Um, we'll go into our non-departmental, um, which during our first, um, presentation for the workshop, um, I combined this along with our measure HH. Uh, because we have our fire contract split into both. So you'll see here, we have fourteen million dollars, uh, projected for nineteen, twenty, fourteen point three. Um, that is, um, six hundred ninety thousand of personnel cost, uh, six point four million dollars in the county fire. This again is a portion of the county fire contract because the total is twelve million, twelve million, uh, eighty-one thousand projected for next year. It was, uh, for this fiscal year, uh, about eleven point one. The debt service, um, is also increasing, um, about four hundred thousand. And, um, that's related to, um, our bonds, two bonds which we, um, pay annually, uh, which is our, uh, nineteen ninety-seven revenue bonds and our two thousand seven RCC bonds. Uh, this is also for, um, gateway sales tax rebates.
Feliz?
Yes.
So one more time, why would the, why is there a approximate two million dollar decrease in the LA County fire contract?
Because this is split into two different, uh, okay, so once I get into the measure HH, you'll see where the balance of that is.
Thank you.
Actually, to the chair, uh, LA County contract went up, uh, another six hundred thousand dollar for upcoming fiscal year. Uh, so it is actually divided into non-departmental and measure HH.
Right, so, uh, going on to measure HH, you'll see that more because we're budgeting for additional, uh, an additional, um, two point five million for measure HH, um, that additional amount went into covering, uh, the fire contract.
So, uh, to the chair, uh, so when we talk and with ITA Belay, it's for the fire, the increase was about close to nine hundred thousand dollars, almost, yeah.
Right. So if they were both under one account, you'd see that it was eleven point one million in one year, but since it's split, um, since measure HH is being used for, um, safety programs, um, we wanna make sure that the county fire, the RCC, which is a three point four million, which is our nine-one-one operation, those programs are covered by measure HH. So anytime there's an increase in revenue for measure HH, those funds will be spent directly on these programs.
Got it.
Okay, we'll move on.
So much more is gonna be spent from the measure HH.
Right.
On that.
Uh, moving on to city clerk, you'll see that there's a decrease of about seventy-two, um, seventy-two thousand dollars and that is all related to election costs. Next year, that'll go up because there, there will be another election.
The maintenance and operations, the decrease is due to?
That was due to the election costs.
The election ca- cost went down by more than a hundred percent, like percent or what?
The election cost went down by seventy thousand.
Because.
Or.
Seventy-two thousand.
Oh, interesting, okay. That's, I don't know.
Yeah, elections are pretty expensive.
Interesting. I've never seen that. From a state agency or a county agency?
One election can cost about a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes. Uh, moving on to city manager, you'll see that this budget went up by about a hundred and seventy-two thousand. Um, and this is because after four years, we're now budgeting for a full-time city manager out of our general fund.
Enough saving. Enough saving.
Arnie, you're not going anywhere.
No, but. Yeah, I volunteer.
Okay.
Okay, um, our cable television, you'll see, went up, um, uh, um, actually went up about twenty-two thousand in our general fund, uh, but decreased in our PEG fees. Um, so there was, if you look at the full budget, there was a decrease of twenty-two thousand dollars. And our PEG fees cover, um, only equipment. For our treasures budget, we see that there's an increase about, um, seventy-eight hundred dollars. And that is due to, um, health insurance coverage and, um, additional expenses for, um, uh, for trainings and seminars and that kind of thing. Oops. Our city attorney, um, you'll see that the personnel costs went up by about two hundred and twenty-four thousand. Um, this is due, uh, actually two hundred forty-three thousand. This is mainly due to the hiring of full-time prosecutor. Okay, in finance, you'll see that there is overall an increase of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, there was an increase in salaries of one forty-four, but there was a decrease in maintenance and operations of a hundred and twenty-four. For human resources, there's an increase of about fifty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, and this is due to recruitments. This is due to the hiring of a part-time, um, personnel and, um, and there's also additional costs due to recruitments because they have testing. Okay, moving on to police. The general fund budget for the police increased by about two point three million. Um, as I explained earlier in the workshop, because the police department has a hundred and seventy-three employees, while the rest of our departments have anywhere from five to forty employees, that's why you see such a large increase. Uh, most of the increases that you will see in the, um, personnel costs are due to increased workers' comp, liability, healthcare costs.
And we do have our, uh, serve PSOs and our jailers included in this budget, correct?
Yes, yes. Uh, another, um, reason their personnel costs increased uh, is that we did have a minimum wage increase and the police department is one of the departments with quite a few part-time employees.
Um, to the chair, also it includes all the civilians who work in the police department that actually exceed number of employees work in the city hall.
A hundred seventy-three.
Yes.
Yes. For public works, there was an increase in the general fund of about a hundred and fourteen thousand. Uh, there was an increase in the street improvement, um, which is restricted funds, um, of about eight million. And so that. And so that is why you see that large increase for public works. They lost funding from CDBG and that's why you see that $114,000 increase in personnel costs.
So those street improvement funds all come from the measure A and measure R, right?
No.
Those are separate.
Yeah, those are, those are, so it's Prop C, Prop A, measure R, STPL, State Transportation Program, local, HSIP, Highway Safety Improvement Program. These are all competitive projects, MTA call for projects.
Also, those are the grants that you write.
Yeah, yeah. These are all the grants that we get. But then in addition to that, gas tax and SB1.
Right, thank you.
Moving on to planning, you'll see that they had an increase of about 177,000. There was a little bit of reorganization there and they also lost funding for their code enforcement program.
We lost almost $130,000 CDBG for code enforcement.
For building and safety, they actually had a slight decrease and that was due to the retirement of our longtime building director. For recreation, there's an increase of 277,000. 256,000 of that was in personnel costs. Of that amount, 79,000 was due to the minimum wage increases. They have quite a few part-time personnel. For community development, here is our CDBG and home funds. There was about a $96,000 decrease in that budget as a whole. And the only other difference that I'll note is that the employee, the employee that was in that position retired so now we have about a half of an employee that's going to be working in that.
Half an employee?
Yes.
Oh, man, interesting.
The other half will be out of housing. So housing, our housing budget is, for federal funds, is $10 million. And we also have the properties that are managed by our housing department. And the manager will be working on both housing and CDBG and home funds. We are in the process of hiring that.
Question to the?
Yes, sir.
So on the Gale property, the one that's at 11529, how come it went all the way to 187,000 from 120?
It just depends on how much repair they may be doing in that year, also salary costs. Sometimes depending on the balance of those, each, each property has its own cash balance. So depending on the amount of cash balance in that property, that's the allocation for salaries.
Thank you.
And then just to summarize what we just went through, there will be about a $5 million increase in our budget from 72.7 million to 77.6. That, those increases are due to benefit rate increases, health, workers' comp liability, the increase in debt service, the increase in the fire contract, part-time wage increases, that's all affecting this increase. And this is just the graph form. You can see that public safety, which is police, fire, and RCC, which is our 911, that is 72% of our budget or 55.5 million. Public works, building and safety, parks and rec, planning, our 9.5 million, which is 12% of our budget. And legislative and administrative, 4.6 million, 6% of our budget. Non-departmental is almost 7.9 and it's 10% of our budget. Looking at it by category, personnel costs make up 59% of our budget. Contract services are 18% of our budget. Maintenance and operations is 14%. Retiree, health and employee relations are 3.7 million, 5% of the budget. Operating transfers are 4% and capital outlay doesn't even make it to 1%.
To the chair.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So if we didn't have the measure HH, we'll be deficit spending, right? Can I assume that?
Yes.
So we have to say thank you to the voter of Hawthorne for passing that measure HH, because we'll be in trouble if it was not for measure HH. So thank you to all residents who vote yes on that. Thank you.
Please continue. Please proceed.
All right, and moving into our revenues, we have an increase in our taxes of about 3.3 million. This is due to our hotel taxes, our TOT increase due to our new hotels. Our sales tax increase due to the economy. Licensing and permits went down just slightly, 73,000. Fines and forfeitures remains the same. The revenue from use of money, which is our interest on investment, is going up to $200,000. Intergovernmental is, includes VLF, state mandated and some state grants. VLF is the majority, which is 11 million, and that is vehicle license fee. The intergovernmental or county is a $60,000 park grant. Service charges increased by about $60,000 and this is due to rentals, fees and reimbursements. Our other contributions are from water, from refuse and our FCC IT services. And that went down slightly because of miscellaneous revenue by about $27,000. Our program contributions for Prop A and Airship remain the same. And graffiti, as you can see, lost the CDBG funding. So our total increase is about $4 million, which is about 5.5%. Our, so the total revenue budget is 77.6 million. Our grants and restricted funds are a total of 73.7 million. And our total overall city budget is 151 million point four.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
So when we talk about, for example, that we lost the CDBG money for the code enforcement and the graffiti removal, it's because the federal, you know, the CDBG federal told us not to fund those programs through that CDBG. We don't, we didn't lose the money from, from the CDBG portion of the money that come from the federal government, correct? Or we lost, or we lost that completely? Or you reassigned the money somewhere else?
It's funding other programs.
They don't support those programs anymore. Yes, they don't support those programs anymore. Just like they don't, you remember, council member, that they used to support like nonprofit service groups? They no longer support, yeah. They no longer support activities like code enforcement or graffiti removal.
So basically, because they do not allow those programs to be charged to the CDBG, but we still have the money that is going to go somewhere, you know, like say,
Like construction.
Home construction.
Like adding construction.
Yeah, first time home buy.
It doesn't even, for first time home buyer, it wasn't very successful because of the cost of, yes, the residential costs in Hawthorne is very high. So it doesn't, it's not enough to pay for the first time home buy.
Because right now, you know, one, the average house is 675, right? 675,000. And then that first time home buy was 400 something, so.
It's very difficult.
Yeah, it is.
For CDBG.
Thank you.
I was gonna also thank city council. Just want to remind them that, you know, if you look at 2015, 16 CAFR report, this city had only 5,390,000 in general fund cash, which wasn't enough for one month operating cost. This is where we were. And today, you should be proud of this accomplishment by taking, you know, prudent measures to be here where we are today with not only, you know, sufficient amount of money for our operating, you know, cash needs, but also at the same time invest, making investments. And in fact, there is another item on the agenda before you tonight that we are doing the best we can between myself and treasurer Patterson and finance director Lopez to make that money, even be whatever we have through that program that is before you tonight for approval in the Bank of the West to make more interest on that. But, you know, of course, there are other measures that we can take to enhance our financial status and make it even more stable. In light of that, council member Awat, chairman of the Public Fund Advisory Committee, will have a presentation. This is in light of being, in the spirit of being more proactive and plan ahead in order to keep us, you know, solvent and also at the same time, you know, enhance the stability and financial situation of the city. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we looking at ways that we can increase our revenue stream through new grant money?
Councilman, I mean, Mayor Portem Valentine, grant cannot bring revenue. Grant cannot go to general fund. Grant is for specific reasons, for, mostly for infrastructure improvement. Yeah, indirectly, yes. We have to have adequate infrastructure for new developments, you know, to come, just like we did for our hotel developments. This hotel development, what was the idea behind it? The city council, you know, took action in making it happen and approve it to generate revenue, that's TOT revenue, right? But in order for the hotel to be developed, we needed an 18-inch sewer pipeline to accommodate 354 rooms. We did that. We brought grant and we constructed sewer pipeline just last year. We completed it a few months ago on Hawthorne Boulevard before even we improve it, before we do the pavement. So yes, we bring grants and grants supports infrastructure throughout the city and create opportunity for this type of developments. Otherwise then, you know, based on the EIR that goes along with any development, then some of these EIRs can create delay and impediment. For, I mean, as a result of the IR, when you have to do mitigation projects, they can create delay and impediment before project can be completed. So this is how grants help. They actually help indirectly, yes.
I also know that council member English was raising the issue, and I'd like to reiterate that, that we utilize our memorial center as a resource for making more, for increasing our revenue. How are we doing with that and other properties we might own? How are we doing with that?
The amount of revenue that you speak of is going to be so small, it's not even going to be, you know, 1% of 1% of 1%. And we can't use the memorial center to raise revenue. We basically ask for reimbursement for city staff time for using the memorial center, which is a public place.
Has it ever been used as an event? Well, I can recall, like 20, 25, along those lines. But it was not a viable situation for the city, because I think there was incidents that occurred. It was, like you said, it's just, it's an even, we're not in the, we're not in the business of making profit off of that, of those buildings. So the only thing that we could really ask for is the, like you said, an equal, fair reimbursement of our employees' time and resources.
As a public agency, Mayor Portem, we like to provide services as free as possible to our residents. This is what a government public agency is all about. We are not here to charge our residents for various services. You know, we would love to provide services as much as we can, free for public. That's what we are all about. We are not private business.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, actually, you know, we can see that the memorial center's been busy, you know, with a lot of stuff going on over there. But like Russell mentioned, when you look that we have to pay overtime, you know, for the staff to stay there after 5:30 or on Saturday, so it basically is up to, balance up to zero, because whatever revenue we got from there, we have to pay on overtime. The other thing Arnie just mentioned about 2015, yes, I was sitting on that side and I have to give kudos to Arnie, because if it was Arnie, you know, we'd come up with these, all these ideas about how to solve the budget, we would, this city could have gone bankrupt. So Arnie have done an outstanding job for this past four years to make sure that now we're looking at the cash reserve of $22 million. So we need to give Arnie another hand of applause. Come on, Arnie.
Please don't mention my name.
It's not just you.
It is all, no, no, it is all.
But you are the chief, because you are the leader that, you know, even us over here sitting as the council, we have to listen to your ideas and the finance director Felice. But you are behind that have put us on the right track and with a good council over here.
It was.
And the staff, you know, you see how we hire all these other staff. So we seeing things are going well.
And our good residents also.
Yeah, and the residents for measure HA, so it's a team effort.
Yes, absolutely.
But you are the chief, the chief that orchestrated, without the conductor, your cast will fall apart. So I have to say thank you. And like I said, even David Parison, we have to say thank you, because he come up with this $200,000 in interests that we got. So all these little things that have happened is because we have a city manager, public work director doing two jobs and then he come up with the genius stuff and now we got Felice putting these numbers together. And now with the council here, we are in great shape. So thank you.
Can you want to, is there another page to this?
One more page.
Let's look at that and then maybe we can have some comprehensive questions.
This just shows you our makeup of our revenue is 73% of the revenue for the general fund is taxes. 3% is licensing and permits. 4% is fines and forfeitures. 14% is intergovernmental, which is our VLF, vehicle license fees. Charges and services make up 3%. Miscellaneous revenue is 2% and program contributions are 1%. And that concludes our presentation.
Can I also acknowledge our finance director, Mrs. Lopez, and also our licensing director, Mr. Feng, and entire finance department staff for the good, hard work they put into this, in presenting this budget. They need to be acknowledged. Thank you so much.
Senator Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, this is really a question for the city manager. Do we have any new hotels being built? I know that they've got some, they put some plans and what about that building over there on Corner of Aviation? Anything happening with that that you know?
Yeah, that one is up for auction by federal government, Department of General Services in June. What they are proposing, we don't know yet. But we'll find out. Currently, it's zone for commercial development. But we have to wait for the result of the auction. At this point, they don't, federal government is just putting it out for a simple purchase and sale agreement. They are not dictating what needs to be built at this point. So we have to just wait to see who acquires it. And then as a result of that, then we are, we are ready to meet with the new owner and developer.
What about some of those hotels? They got plans that have already been approved and Imperial?
Yeah, yes, they are in the plan check process. Two of them are in the plan check process currently. Yeah, Hilton Gardening and another one is in the plan check process. You know, even though. You know, even though hotels are good, you know, and we still have capacity for more development, but we shouldn't be only focusing on one thing. We have to expand our, you know, invitation for investments and zoning as we are doing right now, you know, more industrial and also other type of commercial in addition to hotel. By the way, I just found out that Hotel Accra is overbooked. Both of them are overbooked, which is a good news.
So, yeah, that's a great, really good, and it's good to see that about two to two-point five million dollars showed up of extra revenue because of the hotels. And I just want to remind the residents of Hawthorne that, I know there's all this talk about the Inglewood Stadium and all this stuff. I want to let you guys know, remind you that these decisions were made independent of that stadium, even having been brought up a couple of years before. So we had this plan that we wanted to make Imperial Highway and Hawthorne Boulevard and other sections, hotel, hospitality destination, destination and alternative for L A X. So these are things that your city council took independent of, you know, that hotel being over there. So I know there's a lot of hoopla about that, but yeah, of course, it's going to have an impact, but we just, we made decisions independent of that to take care of ourselves as a city and a community to bring revenue. So I think we did great, so, and it's showing up. So I wanted, what I wanted to do was take item number nineteen out of order, which was the budget hearing. We talked about it, so I'd just like to maybe move to vote on that. So go ahead. Mr. City Clerk, do you have that on your script, sir?
Um, yes, I do.
Now is the time and place for a public?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing approving and adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2019, 2020. City Clerk's department's declaration publication filed, no written communications were received.
So we, in order for us to vote, we have to ask you, the residents, if anybody wants to speak on this item? Does anybody want to speak on the item? If not, I'll declare oral communications closed on this item. The resolution, sir?
Resolution number eighty-one oh one. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving and adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 for adoption.
I move?
Second.
It's been moved by, who wants to take the credit for the second?
Please.
We'll give it to him today. All right.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
At this time, Councilmember Hadar Awad has a presentation on the Public Funds Advisory Committee. Okay, sir. No powerpoint? No powerpoint? Do we have paper or is it all going?
Full screen should be. Okay, there you go. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. As Arnie mentioned, I'm here to present the projected liabilities facing Hawthorne extended over five to twenty years out. As many of you heard today. Indiana, Ohio, and Florida are facing natural disasters they've not seen in a hundred years. California has moved fires like the ones that leveled the City of Paradise, and we're still working, waiting for the big one to hit Southern California. With that in mind, our residents and businesses will look to Hawthorne for help, not if, but when the next major disaster hits our community. To that end, Hawthorne must be ready to deal with a natural disaster, and our state and nation are mandating rightly so that we do. It is time to emphasize emergency preparedness. Now, before I make my presentation, I want to take, I want to thank the members of the Public Funds Advisory Committee for their efforts, and I also want to thank our city staff and our city manager and our new Finance Director Feliz for all their hard work in creating and keeping us fiscally sound as well. So unfunded mandates are services Hawthorne is required to provide as dictated by either or both the state or federal government, yet they do not provide funding for them, and it would, it would come out of our general fund. So when we come to required hazard mitigation, federal and state mandates require that the city to update its local hazard mitigation plan, which is due for a complete update in 2019. Now, S B three seventy-nine requires cities to develop a climate adaptation strategy and incorporate them into the L H M P and general plan. The city must be committed to being prepared for any and all potential disasters, and the goal is to be resilient and ready to mitigate damage to infrastructure and provide access and services for residents and businesses. The four steps would be a comprehensive assessment of all city facilities and resources. City's cost is unknown for the plan update. These required to maintain eligibility for FEMA funds and mitigation measures that we have in place will cost over eighty million over the next twenty years, which have not been taken into account of our current budget status. So one of the major disasters we can face is earthquakes, and Hawthorne is surrounded by two faults, Charnock and Inglewood Newport. So city planning is to retrofit existing sewer lines and connections to withstand earthquakes. City must consider retrofitting its existing buildings. Temporary shelters and supplies also must be planned pursuant to S B three seventy-nine. Climate adaptation plan must be included in the city's updated L H M P as well as the city's general plan. Another thing we're susceptible to is extreme weather. Climate adaptation plan will detail the increased risk of extreme weather events. Hawthorne is most at risk of flooding, extreme heat, and drought. Tree maintenance must be increased to prevent falling trees from high winds. We also deal with a lot of local flooding. Dominguez Channel flows through Hawthorne and poses threat of flooding, especially in the light of increased frequency of extreme weather events. Flooding poses major threat to homes and businesses as well as regional transportation. Our storm drain systems must be upgraded and improved to reduce the risk of flooding. And this was a couple of months ago at the intersection of Prairie and One Twentieth. Couple of months ago?
One Twentieth Street, yes, two months ago.
We were swimming.
Yeah.
Basically, we were just swimming. Another thing that, you know, a big issue is water and drought. So we're going to maintain and enforce water conservation measures, drought tolerant plants, use of reclaimed water for irrigation, emergency drought ordinance, and enforcement for forming infiltration projects. We'll also coordinate with water suppliers to ensure resiliency, which can also bring extreme, yeah? Oh, they can hear? Next thing we can face is extreme heat. Extreme heat conditions are more common and will increase, and the city must address various measures: our power resiliency, our cooling centers, and tree canopy. And we've had a lot of issue with Southern California. I think that's why you're on the Clean Power Alliance. We're going to have a lot of power outages due to extreme heat, and the city must increase its resiliency. Battery storage installation feasibility, emergency generators, maintenance and upgrades, and we're going to coordinate with S C E, with the Southern California Edison, for communication and response, especially when we start getting these rolling blackouts during the summer. We're going to have cooling heat centers for residents, assess air conditioning at Memorial Center, retrofitting or exchanging existing equipment with new air handling units. We're also going to secure supplies, water, et cetera, and we're going to utilize Everbridge Alert System to communicate with residents, which is the program we funded, I think, a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago, at the beginning of the year, I believe.
I'm sorry.
Everbright? We approved that contract three, four months ago?
Yes, yes, that happened back in March, yes.
Now, when it comes to tree canopy, increasing the tree canopy can help mitigate extreme heat events and provide cooling for community. City will increase its tree planting and maintenance program. So this is the alert system, Everbright. On February twelfth, 2019, council approved agreement with Everbridge for a citywide emergency alert system. Now, the ability to contact residents in an event of emergency via cell phones, landline, and social media, and network with regional communication systems. Now, the problem is that state law requires cities to implement such systems, which is a vital tool in case of emergency, and as we said, that it costs annually of thirty thousand, which is coming from our general fund. Now, on to our emergency response and our police department. Police and Public Works must be fully staffed and supplied. Staff must be trained for emergency response and equipment must be upgraded. City's emergency operating center must be updated and maintained. Now, the L A County Fire Contract increases annually and is a vital part of our emergency response team, so providing inventory of emergency food and water for E O E staff is mandatory. Another issue we're going to be, have to put into our budget that we have not really looked into for quite some time is the minimum wage increase. It's going to take a taxing toll on our general fund, and we have to take this into account now before it shoots up. Currently, costs the city an additional one hundred twenty thousand dollars annually. Increasing in phase, domino effect on other salaries in similar ranges. So of course, if the low level are getting fifteen, it's going to make sense that everyone else is going to be asking for a similar type of raise. So that domino effect is something we have to take into account as well. This is going to be increasing in phases, so through twenty twenty-three to fifteen dollars per hour. And this again is also through our general fund, which is why we need to take more measures to increase revenues rapidly. Code enforcement and graffiti removal are no longer eligible to be funded through C D B G funds per HUD, and the annual cost is two hundred thirty thousand for these vital services, which will now come out of our general fund. I can go back any time you want.
I just, since I don't have the script.
Yeah, no problem.
I couldn't make a note to stop. So the minimum wage, you're saying, the increase and people asking for more, like minimum wage salaries, how's that, how do you see that carrying on to our unfunded liability, our responsibility as in making more revenue as a city?
So as, when the minimum wage increases, it's always, human nature, that everyone's going to be asking for a raise as well, because now, once you have the bottom tier, make the same amount as like a medium tier, that's when everyone starts going to ask for a raise. So it automatically kind of bumps everyone's wages up.
Everybody within our city staff is meeting the minimum wage, so it's like, how's that going to impact us specifically?
It is.
Or, I mean, I'm just asking clarify, I'm not trying to like.
No, it is already impacting us, Mayor, it has started impacting us since last year, actually. So those employees who were making less than minimum wage, they're going up, and when they go up, it has a domino effect because then the next rank up, like, let's say, you know, producer, you know, we have different employees in cable TV in the community pool, you know, they go like one, two, three. So when one is going up, is impacted by, by minimum wage increase, next rank up now has to go, move up too.
Yeah, no, you're right.
So this is the domino effect.
Yeah.
So right now, it is, it is costing us one hundred twenty thousand. Next year, it's going to be more because minimum wage is going up until 2025. Every year, it goes up and it is going to accumulate.
I recognize that, and the lower scale that we've had has been in twelve, twelve or thirteen dollar per hour.
No, we had nine dollars even an hour, and then it was going down.
Oh, and they were taking the first, yeah.
Well, thank you for mentioning that.
Basically, it's a salary schedule that you have to follow sometimes.
Yes.
The step, step and ladder.
Yes, yeah, the step ladder, and then it, it affect the higher steps, because now higher steps are making the same as the lower, so now they had to go up.
Okay.
Thank you.
We did the C D B G. So now, the part I don't really like to talk about, but we have to, the cost of all these mandated mitig, hazard mitigations, and these are, these are costs that we're going to, we're conservative on how much we think it's going to cost because we're not going to know exactly how much. We think it's roughly eighty-five million. That's what we projected over the twenty years, it'll be eighty million. But this amount is not budgeted for, and when these mandates start kicking in and we have to start paying these back, we have to increase our revenue in order to at least address these mandated policies they're putting on us by the state. And that's, that's the only reason why, where the state is telling us we have to do these mandated policies and it costs X amount. So if we don't do it, if we don't get any revenue streams, I don't know what's going to happen. I'd rather just us focus on talking about it now, spacing it over twenty years, the city will be good, and it'll be less of an effect on our general fund. So total fiscal impact, hazard mitigation efforts, minimum wage increase, and C D B changes will have a total impact of over eighty-five million, and these are unexpected costs were not factored into previous budget estimates. And that's it?
Go ahead, sir.
To the chair. So when you talk about the eighty-five million, so you're talking in a span, say, from the twenty, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-nine, basically twenty?
Twenty years, yeah. Five to, yeah.
Yeah. So, so at least this is not going to hit us at, in one time, so it is, if, so we have to divide that eighty-five million into twenty years.
Correct, but the thing is, is that.
If we want to do something about.
If we want to, like, at least make sure that we make enough money to pay payroll, then yeah, we have to address this eighty-five over the twenty, twenty years.
Did you, did you took in consideration that possibility, some of those things like bridge repair and storm drain and infrastructure, a little bit, the infrastructure side, that is possibility that there is money coming from the federal government in the short term, because, you know, the president and the Congress are talking about sending infrastructure money, you know, for the repair bridges and.
As it stands of now, these are going to be policies that are unfunded and that we're going to have to pay.
But like I'm saying, so you, you know.
But this is the current snapshot, the accurate current snapshot.
So, so basically, those mandates from the state that we have to comply, but, but like I said, you know, so it's not like a dying straight right now, right? Because we can start saying, okay, there is some stuff that we can do, there is some stuff we can prolong a little bit, right?
What we're doing for the first time, and then, you know, the city, we're finally at that point where we can't actually look five, ten, fifteen, twenty years down the line because we're not afraid of trying to plug up the holes of our budget. Since it's, the budget's kind of fiscally sound.
Yeah.
Now we can start pre-planning, and it's something I wanted us to look at, because if we don't start pre-planning, we're going to have kind of like the same situation before where when stuff hits us, we're being reactionary.
So we have to come up with a plan how to address those particular issue, and we have at least.
That's, that's one side.
Short term and long term.
There's, yeah, there's the other long term aspect that we also have to put into account when addressing all these issues.
Through the chair. Oh, I'm sorry.
Address through the chair? I guess she gets, you need to say that, so she gets it. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So some of these costs, though, as I look at them, we may or may not incur depending on whether we actually have these emergencies, is that correct?
No.
They're, they're.
If I may, if I may.
I mean, for example.
It is mandate, Mayor Portem, it is mandate. We are not waiting for it to happen and then we are, oh, what should we do now? You know, so these are mandate. So local hazard mitigation plan has to be approved by the city council this year. We have to get it approved by FEMA. What is mandating this? What is the importance of it is? If we have these plans in place and, and prove to FEMA that we are taking action, then when, God forbid, disaster happens, we are eligible for FEMA helps. If we don't do anything, if, if we just ignore everything, then, then federal government is not going to even listen to us.
I'm not suggesting that we ignore anything. All I'm saying is, are, is it mandated that we, that we set aside funds for every single one of these items, or are there some items that may or may not occur and we don't necessarily have to, to, to be prepared for them?
No, we have to necessarily be prepared for them.
Every single one of them.
And we have to do our best. We have to do our best. Whether we can achieve hundred percent success, you know, we don't know, but as long as we show, we show our good faith effort, you know, we can go ask for grants also, but we need to find out what kind of revenue, this is just to brainstorm in the coming months to see what can we do, because a local hazard mitigation plan is coming before you. Because a local hazard mitigation plan is coming before you and we have to get FEMA approval on that. That is a serious plan and we need to implement. So, uh, so, yeah, this is, this is more than just, uh, you know, uh, let's have, uh, you know, a, uh, something under the cushion for future. No, it's more than that, it's more serious. Uh, we have to take action, whether we can take fifty percent of it or sixty percent of it or twenty percent. That has to do with what level of success we can achieve, but we have to do whatever we can. And we have to prove to FEMA that we are doing the best we can.
That was one of the reasons why I went out to New Orleans, uh, to kind of understand their background when they hit with Hurricane Katrina. And basically they said FEMA, when they first hit, they did not get reimbursed, they had nothing. So now we have to take these necessary steps in order to kind of, as our city manager mentioned. Get to the point where we can ask for funding in the future.
Absolutely. Council, Mayor Vargas?
Yeah, um, and who came up with all those numbers?
I think that's the cost of.
Public Works.
Public Works?
Yes.
So that's. Pretty sure what you're gonna need in order to satisfy that condition.
That is correct.
Are we gonna have to put, uh, a special, uh, account for that and put money in that account? Or we just have to, um.
This is why, uh, Public Fund Advisory Chairman brought it up. So city council can come up with good solutions.
This is, this is a snapshot of, of a kind of meeting that should have happened a long time ago before. That's going to help set us for the future.
And this is what we need to look forward to. If we don't do this, if, and, and, you know, the what hits a fan, then we're not gonna get any help from FEMA.
We're gonna have to do all this and they're gonna say, because you did not take the initiative, you're gonna pay for it.
Actually, um, you know, I have to, kudos to city council, all the members. We are being proactive and, um, you know, we're local hazard mitigation plan is before the end of the year due. So this is what we are doing. This is the first action we are going to take to bring the local hazard mitigation plan. In fact, at this point, we are securing grant to hire a consultant to help us out with the local hazard mitigation plan. We are gonna bring it before the city council for approval to start with the local hazard mitigation. That consultant is going to help us to get approval from FEMA. But we already have our mitigation measures, that's the cost of it. And they are going to be included, uh, in the local hazard mitigation.
What about that photograph of Prairie and Hundred and Twenty at Dunderwater? What are we doing about that?
Yeah, that's the flooding, you know, this shows that.
The drainage.
Yeah, this shows severe action, yes, severe climate, uh, you know, situation that, you know, we, once in a while experience weird weather condition. So this requires improvement with the storm drain capacity.
What does it take to cure that right now?
Improvement, I just mentioned, improvement in the storm drain capacity. So we have to improve and, uh, you know, enlarge our, our storm drain.
Where would the money come from to do that?
Okay, so that's, that's what we are talking about. It can be a combination of grant and hopefully with the help of the city council. So it's a combination of grants that we go out and, and we, uh, look for and also other means that we can look into.
Basically, we're raising the red flag from now before.
This is something all cities are doing at this point. They have to all adopt, uh, the local hazard mitigation plan. It's, uh, due for, uh, updating. And at the same time, this time now, it became a mandate through a senate bill to include, uh, climate, uh, you know. We have to include adverse climate condition in California into the local hazard mitigation.
Go ahead, Councilor Vargas.
Well, uh, Mete, hey, Dad, what you said something, you know, that we, we have to increase our revenue. How we find ways to increase revenue? So it's good that we would have to advertise for more business to bring to Hottone. So because when you see our main money, that is fifty-three million dollar come from taxes, right?
But see, the problem is we're not.
So the, we, we can, uh, you know, because if we, if we starting to promote this city to bring more tax revenue. You know, especially sales tax and, and property tax and all these other, you know, uh, the hotel tax. So that's gonna help us out, uh, in, in the long run. Because if, if our reserve keep growing, that may be something that we can look and say. You know, our reserve is growing on a steady pace. So we can have some few dollars there and here to allocate to this specific mandate. So, so it could be that, uh, we hope that this trend of growing that Hottone is experienced. You know, maybe can help us solve that eighty-five million dollar liability.
I agree with you, it would. But the problem is from like a business perspective to, when you start building a project, for example, from the ground up. Usually construction time takes about two and a half years or three years. We're talking about the next couple of years, we're gonna be shaking. So we don't have time to like, we need to think of something quickly. We don't have time to like procrastinate the issue and, and hope like, oh yeah, we'll have this project and this project. With the same thing that happened with the mall situation. I do not want to have old projected revenue, I'm just taking what we have now, whatever's in the bank now, we use that.
Yeah, that's it.
Maybe we can plant a couple of trees.
We'll plant something.
There's budget for trees.
We'll plant something. We'll plant something.
So, uh, Councilor, great, great presentation, thank you. So since there's urgency and we have to plan now, do you have a, an established priority, prioritized timeline for this? And if you had one of these items or two or set items to take care of today at the next meeting or in the next few, couple of months. Which ones of those items would they be?
Actually, I'll give the. It depends on what the issues are.
Well, wait, 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 I mean, either.
We are not there yet. We are not, we are not there yet, Mayor Vargas. So this is just to bring awareness to the city council, this is what we have. The first item that we have to bring, I just mentioned, local hazard mitigation plan. I'm gonna bring, uh, we are gonna issue an RFP, we're gonna hire a consultant to help us out with, uh, getting approval from FEMA. So we have to develop our local hazard mitigation plan. The city council approves it, that's the first item. So that's the first item of the work.
We're gonna rely on the, uh, this is for either one of you, on the consultant to help us prioritize and to.
And Neil Gaffney as well and staff.
No, Mayor Vargas, we're gonna rely on the consultant to get approval from FEMA.
Okay.
We need that, all the local jurisdictions are basically in the same boat. Some already did, some are like us. But as far as prioritizing, prior prioritizing, uh, projects. There is a public outreach that we go out to our residents. They're gonna vote on these things, that's part of the process for local hazard mitigation. They are gonna vote on which one, for example, we have earthquake retrofit, city-owned structures, earthquake retrofit. Uh, in opposed to drought, in opposed to, uh, you know, building temporary shelters for our residents during disasters. Uh, in opposed to, uh, tackling, um, for example, extreme heat by, by building cooling centers. You know, we have to, our residents are going to vote in this and then they prioritize it.
Okay, so the, can you go back to the list? So, you know, uh, and that's good, like some people said, uh, the sewers, just because of the top doesn't mean. We might have our gut instinct as to what might, might be the priority, right?
Oh, right, wants to, wants to do the public outreach, right?
Yeah, et cetera, but then for the, to be truly prepared and to truly prepare, just in case. We'd have to prioritize which ones of these we can tackle. I mean, you don't half, you don't repair a, a bridge halfway's.
And then stop and build something else.
You don't get half the toilets ready, you don't have, get half the stuff. So there has to be something, some of these things that we prioritize over, over time.
We can only do that once FEMA gives us, if we're trying to see if we give approval first. So we'll try and get what our cost would be and then try and find out what dates each mandate is gonna hit us at and then just go from there.
Because these are all, I mean, so, Councilor, so those are like, all, all those lists, all those that you compiled were as a direct result of specific mandates from the state?
From our Public Works Department, right.
But like, because they researched it and you researched it and the state's telling us to do certain things that we need to have in order to qualify, okay.
Each local jurisdiction has their own priorities.
Thank you.
And, you know.
Yeah, for sure.
Can I, can I suggest something maybe to explore? Cause when.
Slide?
Yeah, uh, no, 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 the right answer is fine. When Arnie was talking about emergency displacement shelters. When I was at the school district, you know, our eleven school in Hottone School District, uh, supposed to be a medical Red Cross. You know, designated areas that people can shelter there because we have food already, you know, you know, all food, water. To shelter all the people in place. So it is something that we can collaborate and say.
We already have, it's Memorial Center.
For this plan also.
Yes, for this plan, we have to build bathrooms, showers, with showers at Memorial Center.
At Memorial Center.
To make it a, a real, uh, you know, shelter. Because we had incidents of fire in the past, but, uh, Memorial Center, uh, was not available, uh, in full capacity. So then Red Cross, uh, you know, it was used temporary as temporary shelter for a week or so. But then Red Cross slowly, uh, you know, housed them in different locations. But if we can build showers and bathrooms sufficiently, it can. But, you know, I was even thinking of even building more, more facilities, you know, in, in that regard, hopefully, yes.
Right, thank you. We good?
Thank you, that's excellent.
Okay, great presentation, sir. Thank you so much, much appreciated. Thank you for working with, uh, with your committee and with the city manager, excellent job. So just to clarify, folks, this is a money apart from that which we've, uh, had in our budget. So, uh, we're gonna start working on addressing these mandates. Something we have to take care of to, to keep you guys safe. Okay, so where are we at right now? Thank you once more. Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications, sir.
During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of the oral communications. To refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report and recommendation.
Sasquatch, Durgen, please.
Sir, go ahead. Okay, this is my first time, thank you for seeing me. I come to you because I live on the thirty-five hundred block of one hundred and thirty ninth. I live adjacent to a junior high. Uh, my car's been totaled, my mother's car's been wrecked, my aunt's car's been totaled. Um, being on the side of this junior high, it stuns me how we don't have speed humps. Now, I looked through your, I went through the city to try and get them, I read your proposal. I feel I got every single one of my neighbors to sign it. They brought the thing out, we missed it by two miles an hour. Cause it's supposed to be seven miles over the speed limit to get a speed hump, we missed it by two miles. Now, I'm not sure if you guys know on your street, how many vehicles come down in a twenty-four hour period? But after doing that thing with the city, I found out over forty-five hundred vehicles come down. Oh, come down that street in a twenty-four hour period by a junior high. Now during the mornings and the afternoons, cars are slow because of kids getting dropped off and picked up. So it kills the speed limit. But in between those times, cars are doing forty, forty-five miles an hour in this little residential area. It's not a fair through, but forty, over forty-five hundred cars go down that street in a twenty-four hour period adjacent to a school. And not just a block from another school. I find it very unsafe and I want to know what the city council is gonna do about putting humps or getting some type of slow down that area.
Um, I'm gonna ask you to consult with our city manager or do you have anything to comment right now, sir?
Yes, apparently a study was done, we do survey a study, I mean, I'm sorry, we do a speed survey. And, uh, that was the result, that gentleman said it didn't meet the requirement by two mile per hour. The only way I can, we cannot recommend it, but the only way that I can do it if council wants to direct me.
Well, let me ask you this, what are the tolerances on that measurement?
That is the tolerance, I mean, that we already have extended the tolerance and it still didn't meet.
Even within, within the tolerances?
Yeah, because it should, uh, it should exceed eighty-fifth percentile, uh, by seven mile over the speed limit. Apparently it didn't. So the only way I can bring it, if city council would like to direct me, otherwise it didn't meet the study.
Okay, just, uh, so I'm gonna ask you, sir, just to continue talking to him and if you could, uh, just continue giving.
Okay, my, my thing is.
Additional reasons and then we'll consider.
In your param, parameters? No, in the parameters that I was given, there, it's between two, five hundred and two thousand vehicles is which the parameter is. Because if, if it's over that, it's considered a fair through. We went over forty-five hundred vehicles, sir. So those, so the reason we didn't go over seven miles is because of those students getting dropped off by their parents. But when those kids aren't getting dropped off, the speeds are picking up and it doesn't count for those kids getting dropped off.
Oh, all I'm asking, sir, is just to give those reasons through him and then he'll explain it to them. Well, I'm asking you to do, I'm connecting you guys, I'm asking.
The only way that I can do this, if city council would like to direct me to put it on the agenda, I can do it.
No, sure, but collect these reasons that he's giving now, just give them to us later.
Those reasons were.
Have already been done.
Engineering study is done. It's only, it's only up to the city council.
Can you pass on that engineering, uh, study to us, please?
Yes, absolutely.
That's, that's kind of what I want to see, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, thank you for coming. Nick Schofield? Uh, if you could do that and, uh, in a note, a memo or something. Nick Schofield.
Yeah, that's me. Hi.
Hi, sir.
Um, I'm coming to you guys with an, also a traffic, uh, related situation. Um, I live at the corner of one sixteenth in Birch. And, uh, I know we've talked to Mr. Shadber about this as well. Um, it's an incredibly dangerous intersection. Um, I've lived in my house for over about a year and a half. And I've personally witnessed five accidents since August of last year there. The most scary of which in the, um, past month, earlier in May, there was a, um, passenger van that was struck and flipped over. And I came home from work and this is a, you know, residential street. But we saw this van flipped over, people were pulling, you know, the individuals that were in the van out. And then five days later, there was another accident involving another passenger van at that same intersection. And, um, I have security cameras on my house and it's gotten to the point after these five accidents. That the police know me and they're like, oh yeah, hey, I remember you from last time. Cause I always share the, the, um, the tapes with the people involved in the accident and the police. And, uh, we have been trying to reach out about this. And August twenty-seventh, we sent, um, an email with the photos to, uh, Mr. Shadber. Who pointed us in the direction of Alan Leong, sorry if I'm pronouncing that wrong. Then again, on January twenty-second of two thousand nineteen, when there was another accident there. Then again, on March twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, when there was another accident there with, with no reply. Um, and then within the last couple of days, we basically got an email saying we will be reviewing this. Uh, but it just scares us a lot because I'm talking, you know, two accidents in a week, an accident per month. Cars flipping over in our residential street, like right outside of our house. Um, and I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention. But also didn't want to just hear, we'll look into it, because it seems like a pretty serious problem. That if we don't quickly act on it, I feel like people are gonna get injured or killed there.
Okay.
Through the chair, may I ask a question?
I'm gonna ask the, you can elevate it through the city manager, fill out that little form again. And give them details on who you talked to and, and describe the situation and our city manager is gonna get on it, okay?
Yeah, very, very quick question, sir. What in your view is the cause of the, all of the accidents at that intersection?
Thank you for asking, I forgot to mention that. Um, it's super clear, super obvious what the cause is. It's, it's, um, one sixteenth in Birch is a four-way intersection, but there's a stop sign only on the north and south sides of Birch. The cars are all lined up on the, uh, parked in the curb. So you basically have to hold your breath and guess as you enter the intersection. And that's what every single accident we've seen is a car either rolling the stop sign, yeah, go ahead.
North, on the north, when you're coming.
So we're coming on Birch from Imperial South, right? Am I correct on that direction?
Oh, no, it's closed off, you're coming from.
No, the Birch is not closed off.
Okay, yeah, Birch is closed off, you're correct.
Uh, and that goes into a whole other concern, which I know my wife Megan Mitchell has talked to you about. All the increased traffic due to the hotels causing concerns about, um, one sixteenth becoming a third, throughway for that traffic. And with the instances of this being passenger vans and Uber drivers were involved in the other. You know, makes us more concerned about the hotel traffic there as well. So, uh, but to get back to your point, it was the, the, it's just every single one, all five of these I've seen on the tapes. And I have photos here if you, if anyone would like to take a look. It's always someone entering, usually coming from the north, south and getting side swiped.
So we'll, uh, since we can't have a prolonged exchange of, uh, conversation here. We, we, we are tasking our city manager to look at whatever you fill out there and follow up.
Okay.
Do the, do it today, right now.
Yeah, I just, uh, you know, we're.
Okay, thank you, sir, for bringing that up. I have some concerns that I'm going to, uh, talk about during our, our reports. Uh, Pat Donaldson is not here, would anybody else wish to, uh, speak to the? Would anybody else wish to speak to the council lineup? Direct something to- Councilmember Tayeda, you wanna ask something to the city manager?
Yeah, I, I was sitting in a conference where they were addressing issues like that, you know? And, and one of the solutions that they said was traffic circles. That that, that seemed to solve a lot of problems and it slows everything down. And I'm just wondering if there's any, you know, what would it take? Can you do that? Do we wanna do that? Do we wanna think about it? Can we talk about it? To see if something like that, you could put a few around town and see what kind of an effect that has, you know?
So let's, during, during your elected officials' reports, if you wanna bring that up, then we could have a convers- a brief conversation, just so we can continue oral communications. I wrote it down here too, so. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Darlene Love. I live on Wilton Place 116th. You know, I'm having a little bit of a problem with my sons are going to fix that corner where I live, where they won't run on through my bedroom. So the two boys are going to kind to put something there in my yard, large rocks and things that would stop a car. Because leaving that park sometimes those Sunday evenings, they've had a couple of little ones, they come straight down Wilton Place. So they're gonna pride themselves to take care of that. But I'm here to thank you all for Thursday night. I have not talked to my boss, councilman Alex, about too much of anything, but it was a great night. The contributions were great. And usually always, everyone is so proud of our police department. Until we always have a great turnout. Thank you to our new chief. Of course, I didn't see him that much, but maybe he had limits at home that he had to rush to. But thank you for coming. Your display was beautiful. And again, thank you. Two, we'll be voting in Holly Park, which has nothing to do with you. But I want to let the people know that here, this, get ready because when we do help, since I'm the inspector up there. Get people ready for voting when Hawthorne will need your votes. So again, thank you for Thursday night and we will see you again in the fall. But thank you for our great police department and our nice young chief. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Gordon Michael Nigle, native and resident Hawthorne, October the 8th, 1952. First off, I hope everyone had a great Memorial Weekend and, yes, definitely it was a salute to our veterans, you know, in the military, all the different branches have put their lives on the line and done great service for the United States of America. Yeah, and I'll kind of ditto what Darlene Love said regarding the K-9 barbecue dinner. It was a very fantastic event and I, I really commend Councilman Montero in putting it together. And, and most definitely, the Hawthorne Police Department needs to be patted on the back as many, many times as possible. They do great work, you know, and the, and the K-9s really add a great deal to their efforts to subdue criminals and so forth. And anything we can help, you know, in that regard is, is very helpful. That was, you know, in regards to the, the parking situation. I really loved the exchange and commend Councilman Montero bringing that forward and also Councilman Hader bringing up a variety of other different apps and businesses that are out there. And I think, you know, it's sort of like, if, if it's, you don't really have to reinvent the wheel, so to speak, you know, in a way, you know, build upon something that's already there and, and bring all the different parties together and come up with a really great workable solution for our city. And I think we will. And the budget presentation was excellent. I, I really loved all the information that was brought out there and it looks like we're moving forward, upward. And yeah, get that BM off of the mall for shopping, dining, entertainment and, and other things going. And I think we can be really funny at that destination center. I mean, with the football stadium coming up in 2020 and, you know, SpaceX, you know, just growing by leaps and bounds and the Marriott Hotels over here, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, so there's no reason why we can't get a commercial property owner developer on that mall site to, to make it happen. The glass is half-full, you know, and, and that we need to start looking in positive terms and say, and just kind of not always think about, "Wow, how things didn't work out in the past." You learn from those mistakes and you move forward. Regards to the, the hazard mitigation plan, that's, that's a lot of really important stuff. And also there's pension liabilities, a whole lot of different things that, you know, are bombarding the cities. And so I'm really glad that you're addressing all those elements.
Thank you, sir.
And just one, just one little closing quick one?
It needs to be quick. Thank you.
Okay. On Sunday, June the 9th, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., the Sentinel Valley Historical Society is holding their annual barbecue dinner. So they're gonna be having a whole lot of food that, actually, you can go back for seconds and thirds. I'm not supposed to say that, but, you know, one prize, you know, what's written. And then they got the Freeman Land Office from the 1880s and they have the one building that houses all the artifacts from the Victorian-style home that was Freeman's. And then they have the 1834 Sentinel Adobe that is still there. It's running on the embankments, upper embankment of the 45 freeway.
Your time's up.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And we'll go together. Just call me up, okay? Okay, next, please.
My name is Linda Brown. I'm from the Holly Park Homeowners Association. I want to announce that we're having our 10th Annual Pancake Breakfast Saturday, June 15th at Olivet Lutheran Church, 2506 West Imperial Highway in Hawthorne, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., $5 per person. The kitchen closes at 11:30. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you have flyers?
Could you leave that information?
Okay, I'll grab one. Thank you. Ms. Williams? Go ahead.
Light on already, okay.
You're good.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members, department heads. Lethal Williams, a proud parent here in the city of Hawthorne. I wanna give a congratulations to the children from MHS and keep up the good work and go out into college and bring back the innovative ideals that we need right here in the city of Hawthorne. And I want to keep encouraging people to keep streaming our meetings because, you know, when you, when a meeting is over, the phones start ringing and even, you know, things, people from Sacramento even sent me a little clip from what I said a long time ago. It would be a wonderful thing to see someone step from these diocese that have been here for a very long time to run for office in Sacramento and make the change that we need. It's, it's very important to move forward instead of staying stuck here on a local level, which you are appreciated, and then to step in a big arena is very important. And once again, I want to say to Donald Trump, please don't walk away from the podium. You see, infrastructure is really needed here, even in the local communities. It's very important for your administration to get a thing going on instead of walking away from the podium. It's very important. And I would like to say that it's a little talk going around in the community about when the Housing Department got some monies awarded to that department. And some of the people would like to know, is, is that why rent cannot be stable in this Housing Department? Or are the tenants supposed to be totally highly increased? What is the stipulations of that? True enough, it has to be paid off, but do the tenants have to pay these monies back? And I thank you for my time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Hi. Hi, my name is Ruby Coens. I live here at Parkside Village, 12051 Stanley Park Court. Anyways, sorry, I'm a little nervous today. I don't know why. But anyways, my concern is at Holly Park, there is an abandoned building. Well, it looks abandoned. I know a lot of you've talked to me and I've talked to police Ichi, Ishi. I just wanted to make it a record. I would just want to put it on record that it poses a problem, a security threat problem to our neighboring communities there. Because it is abandoned, I see a couple of people just hanging out there. And the, our neighboring community, for instance, you know, the moms don't feel safe going to a playground that is hidden, you know, in front of, behind this, or in front of this building. This building is, is actually, it's an eyesore as well. The building blocks, they clear a line of sight from the busy intersection on 120th and Vaness. The building appears to serve no useful purpose for the community and the park. The building is taking a valuable space that could be used for other park or community activities, such as community centers, swimming pools, maybe a new library. But I did talk to the, the library and they told me that we had no funds for that. So the building just sits there and it's been sitting there over 20 years. When I first found out, I was thinking five years, no. And then it went to 10 years and then I found out it was 20 years. This building just been there. It's an eyesore, but now there's a whole bunch of businesses going on there. The whole community is thriving. We as, I'm part of a Parkside Village mom group, over 50-plus families there. And every time, you know, we wanna do something, we don't go to the park. We say, "Let's go to some other park." And I'm thinking, "Gosh, I just wanna go across the street." Why can't we go across the street? Well, they don't feel safe there. And it's because of this abandoned building. So I just want you guys just to, to be known that this building is a problem for Parkside villagers. And also, we've talked to Holly Park people as well. They're concerned about this building. Hopefully, we can find some good use for this building.
Okay, ma'am.
That's it. Thank you.
If you can fill out the little sheet that our city manager has to, like, further form, no, it's another little sheet? He's gonna give it to you.
Thank you.
Do, do you need the sheet on this one or is it, is there enough based on what she said?
She's referring to the county.
Yeah.
It's actually a county library.
Yeah, the county property.
Yeah.
So, well.
We've been, we're working with her on that.
Through the chair.
Yeah. They, they are working with me. I just wanted to make it official.
Needs to be brief, guys.
Actually, like, 2001, my organization tried to get that building from the county and they said no. So since 2001, that building's been, yeah, like you said, closed.
Quick comment over here?
Through the chair, we're actually working with Ms. Coens, some of us from different, from the Holly Park and also from the county, you know, we've, we have met with some county officials. And we're actually following up on that. So I'm, I've got some ideas, so I wanted to, to bring that by, bring that to you. And we'll talk more about it. But yes, we, we're gonna try and do something about that building. That's, that's the idea. We will, we're working on it.
And as I had discussed with you, you know, that is, the county holds on to their properties? And we, we talked about that a little bit and, but we haven't had a lot of response from our current supervisor, so we're hoping to have a new one real soon. That's gonna be very responsive to us and maybe listen to our community needs. Okay?
Now, I also want to say thank you to Police Chief Ishi because he's actually responded back to my phone calls when my concern was about that park. And, you know, I know there's, you know, certain things that we talk about that I cannot talk about.
Yeah, no, don't talk about those.
But I do want to thank him for being proactive. And also, Ms. Olivia Valentine as well, for being proactive as well. I do appreciate that. Thanks.
I see no further people lined up for oral communications. Anybody else? I'll declare oral communications close ordered. Mr. Clerk, can we have your consent calendar, sir, please?
Mr. Mayor, I have seven items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item nine, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item 10, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item 13, resolution number 8096, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, declaring Hawthorne a healthy, eating, active, living city. Item 14, resolution number 8097, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving budget allocations for city council members for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Item 15, resolution number 8098, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing the appropriation limits for the fiscal year of 2019-2020 pursuant to Article 13B of the California Constitution. Item 16, resolution number 8102, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving an agreement between the city and Tyler Technologies, Inc., to provide the city with performance upgrades and data conversions to the existing financial systems and provide training on the upgraded systems to the city personnel. Item 17, resolution number 8103, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, directing staff not to accept any additional petitions for preferential parking pursuant of, to Hawthorne Municipal Code, Chapter 10.38, for adoption.
I make a motion?
I'd like to, well, I'd like to pull 13.
Okay.
I'd like to pull 13 for discussion.
Okay, 13 has been pulled for discussion?
13.
What do you want? 14? Okay, like everything, plus not. All right. All, all other items, with the exception of 13, 14, and 17, I make a motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
And I have a comment on 13 as well, Mayor Protem, so go ahead.
Okay, so I have requested that we resurrect our old Resolution 7449, which was actually originally passed in 2012, in which it was, then councilmen Vargas and myself initiated the resolution of the city council declaring Hawthorne a healthy, eating, active, living city. And I'd like to resurrect that because I thought at the time, it was, it really was important because we engaged the residents and the employees in trying to do, to do healthy activities in the city. We introduced the idea of having more physical activity to combat obesity, more healthy eating options. And, 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 giving, giving the residents and the, and, and the employees information on, on operations and agencies that, that improved a health, that encouraged a healthy living, healthy living style. So I want to go back to doing that again. It was originally something that was proposed by the League of California Cities and the California Center for Public Health Advocacy. And also, it was originally funded, their, their advocacy was funded by Kaiser Permanente. We didn't use it long enough to actually get funding from Kaiser Permanente. So I don't know, that might be still something we can explore. But it's something that's very important for the residents in terms of seeing their council taking the lead in encouraging them to live a healthy lifestyle. So I want to, I want to encourage us to, to adopt this motion and resurrect that old resolution and reenact it and keep it going from now on. So I make that motion.
Okay, I'll make the second on that and that's a very comprehensive statement you made on that. Resurrecting, it sounds like a good idea, keeping it at the forefront of our community's minds. Okay, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Item number 14?
I think this is the seventh time that you, the city council has voted on this item. It's, it's a yearly resolution for allocations for city council members. It was originally for 3,000 each and now it's whittled down to 1,000. The concept behind the whole idea really was the fact that the council was going crazy with funding nonprofit events, you know, saying, "Let's give 25,000 for this special event. Let's give 50,000 for this special event." And basically, you were just overspending the budget. And this was a way to rein in the budget by saying, "Every council member, you're limited to basically a set amount if you wanna give it to some special event."
I get the concept of what it is. They're saying, "We're changing it from what to what?"
Basically, we redo it every year.
No, we're not changing.
It's just the same thing, but let's say like for the Business Expo, we specifically state it's for that fiscal year. It's not gonna be every year from, for eternity. So it specifically says like for the Business Expo, Business Expo 2020 and so forth. We basically renew it every year.
Okay, I'll read it from here.
Okay, I'll read it from here. Uh, fiscal year 2017-2018, budget, which decreased the budget allocations to 1,000 for each member of the city council. Whereas today, we're electing a budget policy allocating each elected official the amount of 3,000. So we're increasing it, why?
Can you read it?
Over there it said, the amount remains the same as 2019, for $1,000.
It's 1,000 per council.
On the second page, uh, go to the second page.
Right.
There's not 3,000 on my page.
On top, right there, see on the, the first paragraph on top?
Um, I think, I, go ahead, sir, go ahead, you have the floor.
No, go ahead.
No, he's looking at the resolution. The resolution doesn't say it. You're looking at the resolution, right, sir?
One.
I'm on right here on resolution two.
No, the actual resolution says 3,000, can you look at that?
A long time ago, 2014. See how it says 2014?
It resides every year.
Yeah.
It goes through from 2012 to 2019.
Councilmember Watt, or you just, or we just, just? You got the floor, Councilmember Watt?
Yeah, 2014, it was previous, none of you were here, by the way. I mean, except two, but the majority was different.
No, 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 that's fine, guys. I think my, I think what he's, this is not confusing, but what's the need to even state that we had something on 214, 2014 that was 3,000?
I, I can change the format, but when you look at what you're actually doing, you look under section three, it says that it's $1,000 per city council member.
This is the third or fourth.
That's all that counts.
This is the third or fourth year that we, we, we're stating the same thing, that we're reducing it from 3,000 to 4,000. So why don't we just keep it at 1,000?
We can do it that way, that's fine.
Just for clarification. Okay, the thing is that like, uh, since a couple of years before you showed, that you joined us, we've had, uh, Councilmember Michelin made a motion to bring it down to 1,000 along with some other people. And so we brought it down to 1,000 from 3,000. So it's the same statement that we're putting here over and over, sir. It's like redundant saying that we're reducing it from 3,000 to 1,000. If it's at that 1,000.
It's not really redundant because it's been, it's been changed in other ways.
But that statement, why do we?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, just to let you know.
It's a moving mouth.
That question does come up, you know, how has it changed, uh, over the years?
I just see it.
Then all you do is you look at, what do you resolve? And you resolve in section three, each elected official gets 1,000.
If you see some value as our city attorney to keep it in there, I'll defer to you. Does that sound good? Are we good with voting on this? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Or do you still have any questions, so something that seems like, like, does it make sense? I just want to hold off for the vote.
Yeah, it was just weird how the writing was, the explanation from 3,000 to 1. It's always going to come up, they're going to ask you, like you mentioned, what is the, called, the, the history timeline of?
Actually, it started with $70,000, one year. Prior to 2014.
The council member got 70 grand?
No, 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 it wasn't per council member, it was city manager that spent that year, close to $70,000 on public events. Then it went down to 3,000 per council member, now it is 1,000. So that was the year that we went down to 5 million and we couldn't make the payroll.
One of the, also the reasons to remind the council, uh, to remind the community and, uh, our, our council members that weren't on the, on the dais at that point was that not only were people overspending, but it was also being, uh, donating, donating to the nonprofits that came up and asked for, for money. People were politicizing it up here, you know? Somebody would come, their friends, friends that they had in the nonprofits would come up and ask for something. And somebody wanted to be a hero, yeah, let's donate 5,000. And then how could anybody really say no to that? Like, vote against the nonprofit being donated money, right? It looks bad. So people were trying to, um, grandstand and impress their nonprofit friends over here with that stuff, which are valuable, uh, contributions that they give. But, uh, it was making, it was politicizing and putting other people at like, in a, a bad position if they want to say no to something that was obviously at some point becoming out of control spending on these types of things, which was, so now we just stuck to the, we decided to do 3,000 because we thought that was a fair amount. And because of our budget situation and our city manager that said, hey, you know, we got to control every aspect, we reduced it to 1,000. So for both the financial aspect and the political, politicizing of that.
Yeah, and, and the reason that Michelin did that motion to decrease from 3,000 to 1,000 was because we were doing furlough.
Also.
To the staff, and we feel that, you know, the council should have contributed something to decrease that amount. So I was sitting on that side.
Don't you think that, you know, it's a good idea to, uh, pick different events throughout the city? And maybe give them.
So, no, do your, there are, there is a list of, that.
Yeah, yeah.
We have the list here today?
Yeah.
The list is here of the different events you could contribute. If you have a specific group, uh, Councilmember Taya, that you want to add to that list that allows for you or anybody to use that specific thousand dollars that you have?
I'm limited to 1,000 dollars.
Yeah, you could give a little bit here, 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 here. If you have a, if you have a nonprofit, anybody up here has a nonprofit they'd like to, uh, contribute to, um, to allocate. Remember, this isn't our money, this is, we're not contributing. This is city money that we're having to allocate personally, individually to these groups. Do you, just to make it fair, right?
Okay, uh, is, is everybody usually go through, I'm new here.
They all go through it.
Usually go through it?
I don't touch it.
You don't want to allocate, okay.
No, cause, yeah, I never did, it, cause I, I was treating Hawthorne like a tech startup.
What's that?
Like a tech startup. As in, we, I didn't have enough revenue. So usually when you're starting out a new business, first five years, you don't touch into revenue. So that's why my philosophy is different. I mean, it's not a bad idea to help and donate, no, it's beautiful, it's just.
The kids, the kids in a particular, uh, team, uh?
They have to be on there.
You know.
They have to be on the list.
I mean, I don't want to say anything, but.
That's okay, I got it.
But look, I want us all to be on the same page, guys. Guys, over here.
No, 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 I, no, I know that, I know that. No, it just, you know, I think that it's really important for the, uh, council or myself to be involved in what's happening in the city and throw them a few dollars every now and then to encourage them to do whatever they were attempting to do. So I, I think it's a good, it would be, it's good to have that involvement and that interaction with what's happening in the city, if it's, you know.
But like, um, so like, I mean, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, you know, but. I mean, is anybody here suggesting that we, we just kind of reduce, just do away with the whole amount, period?
No, I, I don't think so. I think, I think that's my better.
I just want to say what my philosophy was, that's it, on the item.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Well, anyway, okay.
Kind of stress why I would vote one certain.
If I got 1,000 dollars, I got to find the right people, uh, right, from that list and give it to them and everybody be happy. I might want to have 2,000 dollars.
But you could, no, you cannot have.
Can't have 2,000, okay, well, let, let's move on.
You gotta make payroll.
This is, uh. All right, this is money that, this is money that, uh.
Look, those kids that came over here today, uh, those kids, if they had a program in their school.
Hey, I don't want to, and now I know who I'm going to send, uh, your, I want to send people your way, Councilmember Watt.
Okay, I, I sell fundraise, that's why it's different.
Oh, okay, okay, got it.
I sell fundraised, but I don't want to tax the general fund. That's what electeds are.
Got it. Everything, everything good?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, let's make a motion, please.
Move, oh, you're, you're, okay, nevermind.
Who's second?
I do.
The vo, the vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes, except for, uh, Hadarwad, who's voting no.
17, nine.
17.
Okay, to the chair, um. I want to talk about this, uh, you know, moratorium on the professional, uh, preferential parking privilege. Because last city council, we have a petition, right? Uh, for, and, and, and then we decide to not to grant that petition because we vote to postpone. Uh, and I felt a little bit uncomfortable the way we did that the last time because the people was already, uh, here because, uh, they submit the application and the staff was, was recommended for us to say to vote on, on that. Uh, and then we suddenly took it out of the, you know, ta, you know, table. And then we direct the city manager to do this moratorium. So now I want to ask, what's next, right? So what, uh, after this moratorium is in place, what we go, are we going to have a report coming from, from your department, from the Public Works Department? And what can we say to the, to the residents that if it comes to us, okay, what you guys going to do?
I've already received questions. And I said, the city council directed us not to accept any more petitions. And that was the answer.
But after this moratorium, what is the next step?
It's, you're the next step. You direct staff, you want to start accepting them again, you tell us.
But can we have a report on the reason that we're putting a moratorium on it?
But you are directing me to put a moratorium, you want me to bring a reason?
Some people did, I was, I was, I, I, that's what I abstained the last time. Because this was not, you know, because when, when the meeting was over, the lady came to me and said, what happened? Because she thought she was going to get the preference.
City manager was knocked out.
So, so that, so we need to figure it out. Okay, so we put a stop on it. But what is the next step? Are we going to come up with a solution? Are we going to do it a different way? Are we going to, you want to understand what I'm going?
Basically, we're trying to find a solution now, that's it.
Yeah, but so, but if there is nothing, a report to come after this, so how can we know?
No, I think, we had a, we had a, what's it called, when we get the closed, uh?
Close session?
Like a, legal confidential on the parking numbers. I think you asked for a while back, when he was trying to do the T pilot program.
Parking thing?
Yeah, the T pilot program. So when he did that, he asked for a report done on why we, we should or why, the pros and cons of having a moratorium. And I think from that, we went to.
Yeah.
It was just too, it was taxing too much on the city's infrastructure.
Well, I, I know that, but so, now, this moratorium now is going to be effective as today because we're going to vote on it. But I need to find out, what is the next step? Are we going to have a report that we're going to decide what we're going to do next?
Oh, can I? Okay, I'll, I'll respond that, no, 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 it's like, I mean, look, the, the, the reality is, when you, when you do the preferential parking, it, it passes on the buck to everybody else on the, uh, streets over. And I hear it all the time, I hear it all the time, Bajra Park and some of these other areas. So then you put one there, preferential parking, then it passes on to the other street. And it's kind of weird. So the thing is, we want a long, the moratorium is here, say, you know what, we have a bigger problem. This preferential parking is, uh, system is not going to solve it. And what is the next report? In reality, it's things like you actually did today. You brought this gentleman, things that our council member Watt is doing and possibly giving us alternatives, applications, remember we had that whole thing? You know, uh, different things like that, that we can explore that, because, you know, it's like you're passing, it's a temporary fix. You're just like putting a band-aid, you're band-aided, and it's not fixing it.
So to the chair, so to the chair, so what?
And other people are going to get more mad at us because they're impacting.
Okay, so to the chair, so what you mean, what you're saying that this moratorium, this moratorium on parking, uh, preferential parking is definitely, is in, you know, it's indefinite, it's going to be.
Until we rehearse.
Right.
It's indefinite for now.
Basically, it's in, we don't, we don't do no more professional.
Until council.
Decide.
Wants to reconsider it, yes. But, but that solution that you, the concept you brought up is the only concept I would say that is really worth it to, to test drive. Because even, even if you had money to build one parking, that's not going to help the city, you know? Uh, then you need to build maybe 20 parking structures throughout the city, for example. One doesn't help. This is why all these churches that are scattered around throughout the city, different shopping centers, when parking lots can be available at night. Yes, this is a very good concept, uh, you know, to be put into test.
So no more parking.
And then like, uh, I don't, I'm trying to think about a human body, how it works, you know, we're talking about Band-Aid on a, on a, on a small wound. But now, we got this big monster that's called Sacramento in Califor, you know, the state of California, that's trying to push all these, um, Senate bills and assembly bills that, uh, we don't know how they're, they're, they're going to impact us negatively if they all get passed because they're going to try to ask us to build all this housing and a, a high-density housing. And so the thing is, we put a little small Band-Aid, right now, we can claim victory, right now, oh, yeah, okay. Immediate like satisfaction and, uh, people, you know, relief for those people and it's going to get. So then when the, those Senate bills come and if they come, we're going to fight them. But if they do come, we don't know how, that's going to cause a hemorrhage. A hemorrhage, a problem that we won't even be able to like, you know, keep, you know, stay on top of. That's, that's the big fear.
Yeah, I just, to the chair, I just wanted to make sure that people understood what we would, what we're doing because if, if people start talking out there about how we stop the preferential parking, we had to say, it's, it's on hold indefinitely until, until the decision.
But also, also remember, council member, and I, I, I understand your passion, everybody's passionate up here and everybody's concerned about park, no, hold on, hold on. But you know what? The, the, the whole weight of this whole parking situation doesn't fall on your shoulders or mine. This took like 20, 30 years, 20, 30 years to create. And we're not going to fix it like right now.
You'll never fix it.
Well.
It's going to get worse.
Cause you can always increase.
It's going to get worse. So, okay, guys, who makes the motion? Motion made by Councilmember Montero.
Second.
Second by, uh, Council, uh, Mayor Protam Valentine, thank you, guys, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Is it the temperature, everybody's kind of elevated in, uh, in energy today, man?
It's exciting.
Jesus Christ. Can you guys check the air conditioning, man?
Amada's almost over.
Yeah, I didn't need, I didn't need lunch.
What's the next item? Item 11, sir?
All right, uh, now is time and place to declare publicly, uh, publicly received sealed bids for the Hawthorne Municipal Airport Rehabilitation of Runway and Connector Taxways, project number 18 dash 03. Public Works Department Declaration of Publication filed. There were two bids received, all were accompanied by bidder's bonds. The prices are as follows. American Road Maintenance, 257,440 dollars. Maxwell Asphalt, 263,000 dollar, 1,936 dollars and 50 cents. Motion that bids, uh, be referred to staff for study and recommendation.
Okay, so let's take a look. Do you guys look, we had a chance to review this before the meeting. I'll make a motion that bids be referred to staff for further study and recommendation.
Second.
Please vote.
Alex. Okay, I have a vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Item number 20, sir.
Now is the time and place for a public hearing to adopt Resolution Number 8099 regarding establishing fees for redacting video records in response to public records requests. City Clerk Department Declaration of Publication filed, no written communications were received.
Uh, question? Uh, buh, 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 yeah, question? Okay, so where's the orig, this is originating from and, uh, who's, who's asking for this?
I am. We're seeking reimbursement for the city's actual cost.
That's a good thing.
Wow, man.
All right, I agree.
Look, you know what, somebody turn up the air conditioning, it's affecting everybody here, Jesus.
First time Russ goes in that hard.
Wow. All right. Well, thank you, city attorney, all right, I make the motion.
I think this will teach us to not have our meetings go past 9:00 PM.
Aye, 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 aye. All right, go ahead, guys, I made the motion.
Second.
You've always wanted to say something, do something like that, okay, gotcha.
Montero and I are having fun now. Next.
Resolution 8099, you want me to go with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution Number 8099, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing fees for re, yeah, for redacting records in response to public rec, record requests for adoption.
I, I make a motion to support our city attorney's item.
I second.
Um, I'll, I'll give the, uh, second to Councilmember Taya. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Mr. City Manager, your consent calendar?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I have items 23 through 28 for your approval.
I make the motion for all items.
Second.
Second.
Please vote.
Mr. Ruggers?
Geez, this button is not working. I need you guys to check. Thank you.
The vote reflects mayor and city councils members voting yes.
Mr. City Attorney?
Item thirty, alone.
Well, well, what happened? Okay, uh, I make the motion? Something's happening here.
All right, the voting reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
At this time, we have council discussion action items. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mon, Councilmember Montero.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would like to have a motion to direct the city attorney to prepare resolution accepting donation of parking system technology from Shafad Abdullah for the pilot project.
You know what? I second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we wanna have it? Okay, I'll make the, I'll make the, it's been made, uh, motion has been made and seconded. Please vote.
Mr. Tayeda?
Oh, yeah, yes.
Come on, man, you make the second and you don't vote for it?
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting, voting yes.
Thank you, my colleagues.
So we'll see how it goes. It's gonna be good, you know? Knock it, knock it till you try it, let's see. But absolutely, if there's other, if there's any other, if there's any other systems out there. And wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be great to have, wouldn't it be great to have like one of our own, uh, businesses here, efforts here develop a great solution?
You know, um.
Okay. And so, so who cares if it doesn't go outside of the city and it just addresses our concern? We need to fix our problem.
To the chair.
Go ahead, sir.
You know, I, I love a guy with a new idea that's willing and, and he has to sell it. See, behind everything, there's a salesman. And if, he's gotta go knock on a bunch of churches and a bunch of people and he's gotta do a lot of talking. Doesn't matter what that app says, you know? But.
Oh. Yeah, so we, we do have a, a, a relationship. It's not like I came out of the blue and started wailing on him.
No, 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 no doubt.
So he knows this, Chris, in the tech world, that's constructive criticism and helping him get seed money, they're going to grill him. So I'm just trying to help train him to make sure if he's going after that seed money, he knows what to say, 'cause it's that important.
Excellent.
That's what I say, you're gonna be a mentor.
He's gonna have to, uh, sell it.
You're gonna be mentor.
He's gonna, he's gonna have to.
All right, guys.
I'll, I'll gamble on him. I, I, you know, Columbus did, he took a chance, you know?
Okay.
So we'll, we'll, uh, we'll see what happens.
He's our explorer here. Thank you. Elected officials reports recommendations. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, Pimenez?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. One, I just wanna thank our two city clerk interns, Tatiana and Cleo. Um, they've spent over two hundred hours helping out City Hall, so I wanna, you know, officially thank them. And, um, great news that they're both S M C students who are transferring. One's going to U C Berkeley and the other one to UCLA, so I'm really proud of them. Um, in addition, we're gonna have two additional, uh, interns, they're both coming from U C I, um, Walter Perez and Joshua Barsky. Um, with that said, if there's, if there are any high school students who wanna do any hours this summer, please contact us at three one zero, three four nine, two nine one eight. And basically, you'd be helping out, uh, City Hall. There's a lot of high school students that need to do volunteer hours, so it's a great opportunity. Um, if there's anyone City Hall, directors as well, who would like any interns, uh, just let me know. Uh, I basically need to know about two months prior and then basically I'll contact the college, um, and, you know, we can have some interns help you guys out. Uh, they've been a great help to us. Um, and then the last thing is, just, this is a reminder that we're hosting a, uh, meeting on the new voting process at Memorial Center on June eighteenth from, uh, six to eight P M. All the information's on Facebook, Nextdoor, uh, and our city website. So, uh, please make sure to attend again, June eighteenth, uh, from six to eight P M at Memorial Center. Thank you.
Councilman Awat?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out today. Um, loved the discussion. This is now, now it's fun. Now we're, we're actually having fun now, like actual conversations and not just one way. Um, wanna see that, um, it's wonderful, see the budget's normal. Um, just thank you guys for coming out and that's about it, it's late enough.
Councilman Montero?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Valentine. Again, you know, thank you for everyone to come out and thank you, the finance department and the Director Feliz and Arnie for that budget, outstanding, thank you very much. Uh, so, um, just a few updates on May fifteen. I did attend the Centinela Valley Union School District Safety Summer, where they talk about, you know, all the school district, how to improve safety into their campus and surround communities, so it was pretty good turnout, uh, at that safety summer. On May sixteen, uh, we did have the town hall meeting and I wanna thank everybody who showed up because, uh, that town hall meeting, um, exceeded my expectations. So we had, uh, at least, uh, you know, forty people there, apartment owners, property managers that asked a lot of good question. Uh, so they were very happy with the new bulk item policy that will begin, uh, July first. I did brought up the issue of rent, of rents being up too quick, too fast, you know, too much. So I make them give me a pledge that they will not raise the rent no more than three to five percent a year. So it was only one, one owner that objected to that, that thing, but everybody else, you know, uh, didn't say that much, so, but they knew where I was coming from because the rent's going up three hundred and four hundred. Uh, so I wanna thank again, you know, Don Harris from the Republic Service, Mr. Gus Mesa from the Water Municipal District, Wendy Salades from the Salt Cal Gas, Mia Powell from the, uh, California Public Utility Commission, and our own staff, Doc Kraus and Chris Palmer for, uh, fantastic presentation and it was a good discussion, so thank you for having that. Also had a lot of fun at the Hawthorne Police Department, uh, H P O A fundraising event. A lot of, uh, I won a lot of prizes, so thank you for that. Uh, on May twenty-first, we did a sexual harassment training over here, so it was pretty good to see the staff all came together and, and, and the city council people, uh, you know, to understand about sexual harassment and the consequence of that. Uh, on, uh, May fifteen, I went to the Hawthorne Math and Science Academy Scholarship Night, where I said I owed, you know, about six scholarships to the students that outstanding H M S A that we have right here in our neighborhood. Uh, thank you, Mike Talito, for inviting us to the golf tournament, uh, dinner. It was excellent and, uh, it's, it's good to see all those, uh, veterans and the wounded warriors that, uh, you know, sacrificed their life for us. Uh, also, we attend the, the annual Medal of Honor and congratulations to Jonathan Scovall and Pedro Mambo for their lifesaving award, so thank you, Chief, for being there with us, appreciate it. K nine. Uh, I have to say that last Thursday, May twenty-third, was the K nine dinner, it was very successful, a lot of residents came out and organization. So I want to thank especially the Cuana's Club and Bob Marcela for cooking, uh, offer Saldana, Saldana for being there to help, uh, the Pacifica House, the Be, uh, Behavioral Health Services and parents. And then I wanna say that so far, we are close to fifteen thousand dollars. So that's, that's a record achieved so far, so it's gonna be good on your watch. Um, and of course, yesterday, uh, we remember of those soldiers that die, uh, from civil war to the Gulf War, uh, so we remember those who passed, uh, and fought for this country for us to have this liberty, peace and tranquility and democracy. So, uh, we have to remember those who die for us to be here safe. And, uh, and that's it, your mayor, thank you very much and have a good night.
Yes, I'd like to, I'm very impressed by those, uh, young people that came here today. I wish I had half of what, uh, they did when I was in high school. It's great, it's great to see that, the, the young people that are really, uh, doing well and, uh, it's a real treat and a real pleasure. You know, I was sent to a conference in, uh, in Palm Springs recently and, uh, you know, I wanna see a, a, a traffic circle somewhere in this city. Okay, I spent three days over there, I got a few things, I got a, 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 a traffic circle in my head. And I don't know where they can place one, but it would be a good idea to check the, uh, the accident, the, you know, the, the particular corners in our city that generate the, the largest amount of accidents. I don't know if those records are available. But I, I would like to see that, not only would it might beautify the city, it might solve a problem. And they, the people that were in that conference, which was, you know, a lot of very sharp people and a lot of people that, uh, know what they're talking about, kept bringing that up, different ways, the, the number of, the casualty rate has just increased, um, with pedestrians. And so, uh, that was one. And that, that particular street, one hundred and sixteenth and Birch, you know, I'd like to have somebody say, hey, maybe this might not be a bad place to try it out. I don't know. A traffic circle.
Yeah, round or round, roundabout.
Yeah, roundabout.
Yeah, because from what I gathered today, looks like, uh, resident is asking for four-way a stop to slow down.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is not about mobility. What you are talking about, uh, Councilmember Tayeda, uh, roundabout is normally about mobility, is not about slowing traffic. So basically, it's a non-stop movement without having a controlled intersection, no signal, no traffic signal. Uh, in this particular case, looks like this chairman was talking about, they wanted another stop sign on Birch Avenue, so it become a four-way stop control. So we're gonna look into it and we, we already have the accident history, we have all the accident reports, we're gonna look into it again and, um, we'll be, we'll bring it back to the next council meeting.
You don't think that a traffic circle would make any difference whatsoever?
No, traffic.
That a four-way stop would be better?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I cannot talk anymore? No, it is not a control for pedestrian. Roundabout is com, is just continuous movement.
All right, well, I'll take your word for it. I'm not gonna argue with you. And, um, you know, I wanna thank you guys, uh, the ones that could make it to our golf tournament, that was, uh, we had probably thirty vets there, about seventeen vets playing. I had, uh, you know, um, you got an opportunity to see the, the actual, uh, the, um, sacrifices, you know? And so I, I really appreciate you guys coming out to support this. And, you know, we have a, a softball game scheduled, uh, with Hawthorne P D. We're good for that, Chief? Yeah. Okay, and that's gonna be June second. You know, when I, I thought, I always work really hard to try to create, uh, opportunities for fellowship among the combat wounded. They really need that, that's really a big deal to them. And when I asked, uh, um, Detective Kang about it, he said, yeah, absolutely, I think that's a great idea, let's do it. I didn't have a team, you know, I just threw that out. So for the last six weeks, we've been having practices and, you know, we started with the first practice, nobody showed up, and second practice, five showed up, so we have a team now. We have a team, we got about fourteen, fifteen guys, uh, probably, there's a few, there's one kid that lives in Hawthorne that was shot, I mean, there, there, there's some guys that, that were, uh, hurt bad, but they're, they're gonna be there and they're gonna play. So I like to, if you guys not doing anything Sunday morning or Sunday, uh, June, uh, June second, come over to Wilson Park in Torrance and you're gonna see some, uh, some of the best, uh, softball you've seen in a while, okay?
You know what? I'm kinda stuck on who I'm gonna vote for. The wounded warriors or our police department, I don't know, man.
I got it, I got it, I'm going with the vets, okay?
What time Sunday?
You know?
What time Sunday?
Uh, our game, I think, is scheduled for twelve o'clock. The, the, uh, the guys from the P D, they have, uh, from ten to two, they're gonna be playing a game early in the morning and then, uh, at twelve, it's our, our time to play.
That's gonna be fun, that's gonna be fun to watch, absolutely.
Uh, June second. And that's gonna be over at Wilson Park. And, um, we're looking forward to it. I got my guys, they're getting all set up, they got shirts, they got, you know, I mean, oh, they're, 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 they're all excited about this.
Cool. Thank you so much. We good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to, um, just say thank you to the police department for the distinguished officers that they presented at the Medal of Valor ceremony, Jonathan Scovold and Pedro Nambo for life, their lifesaving skills. Uh, thanks to the police department for always, uh, giving us, um, heroes to celebrate, uh, for that Medal of Valor luncheon. It was a very, very good luncheon and it was a very excellent event. Now, on May twenty-first, I went to a program put on by the Los Angeles Economic Development Corporation as part of its series of Red Talks. You've heard of Ted Talks, these are Red Talks. The principal speaker was Michael Carmody, the principal consultant of Invista. Mr. Carmody also led a panel discussion. The topic was the future of supply chain. Since we're talking about disruptors today, this is a time to introduce supply chain. Here are some of the key points that were made. We are, first, we are in the age of digital transformation where customers are more empowered than ever. Companies used to keep inventory in large warehouses. The proper use of data will allow inventory optimization where the company keeps only a small amount of products they need, eliminating waste. As they get better and better, they will build to specifications as auto dealers are doing now, as opposed to having large product inventories, perhaps even eliminating the need to have storage space. Another point, data collection is critical to benefiting, um, uh, business operations. Businesses should always know first, what is the goal, then collect the data to support it. Always make sure you have the correct data to be able to make the best decisions. How can we use it as a government agency? Um, it hasn't been, those, those issues haven't been teased out very well because they've been dealing with only businesses. But I would, but, but one of the things they raised is that as a government agency, we can, we can use data collection to pay our supplies, suppliers earlier, thereby keeping them afloat. So our, our suppliers depend on us for payment. If we pay them earlier, they won't have to scramble to make their own payrolls and make their own payments. Another, another point that was raised, the job opportunities in this digital, digital age are now in such jobs as data analyst. All companies will be looking to hire this category of worker or train their existing employees in data collection and management. So the new watchword is data and data collection. So, um, I also want to, uh, commend, uh, Councilman Tayeda for, um, for that wonderful golf tournament dinner. I attended it, the wounded, it's, it's the organization, Wounded Heroes of America. There were many veterans at the dinner, uh, from the older Vietnam veterans to young men and women from the wars of Iraq and Afghanistan. What moved me was seeing the condition of some of our veterans who have returned with missing limbs or blinded. And yet they're positive, they're positive and they're looking forward to their future. They're not negative and angry, they're very positive and they're very, very patriotic. We can never repay the debt to those who perished, but for the living, we can do everything we can. And I made that point yesterday at the, um, Memorial, uh, Memorial Day Ceremony, through contributions to veterans organizations, through volunteering our time and through advocacy of policies and laws that will improve their lives. We owe it to them. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, folks. Thank you all for being here. Um, this is one of our longer meetings, but, you know, we talked about the budget and we talked about a lot of different things that are of really, uh, of big importance to the city. So, uh, well, everybody kinda sorta mentioned all the different events they attended, um, so I'll just, I also attended the H P O A fundraiser, great event, uh, congratulation to everybody over there. Lo Meli's, uh, Italian food to go with, uh?
Lo Meli's.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm not Italian, brother, Jesus. Is, is the air conditioning that on or what? I'm telling you, man. No, it was a great event. Um, great Italian food and, uh, good company. The Medal of Valor, congratulations to our two police officers that, uh, were honored over in Torrance in the South Bay Medal of Valor luncheon. It was great to join them and say hello to them and, uh, congratulate them. The K nine dinner was a great success. Thank you to Councilmember Alex Montero and the President's Council for, um, organizing this thing annually. It's a great turnout, it's a great opportunity to have good fellowship with the Hawthorne community that comes and we invite more of the different groups out there to come and participate as well. The Wounded Warriors, uh, of America Dinner, a great opportunity, uh, to go and see and hear testimony from all those who have been impacted by the, you know, the, the casualties of war, you know, that what happens during war and it's, uh, and one of the common themes that I heard was that even though they were injured, even though they can't see, even though they have limbs that are missing, even though their, their lives have been affected, the constant theme that I heard was that they would do it again, protect our flag, protect our constitution, protect our way of life, to protect our country.
So, I mean, that, that was really impactful, and it really, you know, it was kinda, everybody was emotional when they heard those type of things. Remember, there's some people that are always supporting, but the people for us, newbies, to hear this, and we were impacted, like, intensely. So, looking forward to the next years and to continually support your group. The Memorial Day event that we had, the Memorial Day Center, was a great success. We have, uh, so every Memorial Day, we have at around 10 or 11 o'clock, either the VFW or the American Legion, uh, hosts the Memorial Day service. And we have the different groups, like I said, VFW, American Legion, and we also have your council members who go. And we also have our state senator that shows up, our state assemblywoman who shows up, and our Congresswoman, Maxine Waters, that comes, and a lot of dignitaries from local cities. So, you know, it's a great event. It's a great, uh, way to be able to honor those who have fallen. And one of the comments that was made there, and for a lot of people out there, it is true, is that Memorial Day is more than just going out and eat hot dogs and, and hamburgers and just lounging around and jumping in the pool. It's not a celebration. It's just a day of honor for those who have passed away, veterans who have passed away. You know, not even veterans, they didn't get a chance to be veterans, is what, is what it is. You're a veteran if you survived and you came back home. These are people who passed away serving our country.
Are fallen.
Yeah, all are fallen, yeah. Fallen, killed. Okay, so just remember that, that it's, we also have the day where we honor veterans on Veterans Day. So, but seeing a lot of the people who lost a lot of their, um, colleagues out there on the battlefield, you know, getting emotional and everything, it was very impacting, so just try to make it up to one of these events. You guys are gonna really be impressed, and it's a solemn moment, and we hope you can join us. Again, we have great schools in the community. Today, we highlighted Hawthorne Math and Science Academy. Uh, and it's important to know that we have a great Hawthorne School District. Uh, but we also have to make sure that we know that they're in good company with all our other school district, schools and school districts that are performing greatly. For example, we also have Weisberg School District with our Da Vinci, uh, the three schools that are combined into one system that we have. Uh, we should be very proud of them as well. They always score consistently high, consistently high as a school, uh, district as well. We also have, you know, we have our local schools. We have Alhuda Islamic Center School. Um, and we have St. Joseph's School, parochial schools that are high performers as well, great quality education. And we have Centinela Valley, which we should, we should be proud of. They've, I mean, everybody says, "Oh, they have..." No. From where they were and where they are now, it's a great, they've gone up in great leaps and bounds. We have SpaceX that's constantly over there at the, at the Engineering Academy that they have there, uh, offering their service, money, and talent to be able to guide the students. We have Criminal Justice Academy. We also have an Art Academy, a Communications Academy. And that just, academies don't just pop up because it's just something that pops up. They pop up because of the schools performing well, and there's funding for it that comes from the state and other organizations. And so scores have increased as well for them. So that's why, like I said, that all contributes to property values and where we are as a city. And we should be proud of all our schools that we have. Support all our schools. We don't wanna see any of our schools, districts, uh, fall, uh, behind. We wanna make sure that they all are at the same level, okay? Because these are all our students, these are all Hawthorne residents that we need to support. But today was Hawthorne Math and Sciences Day here with us, okay? So, let's see, I got like a couple things real quick. Very important, 116 Hawthorne Boulevard, um, I've driven up that street, and I've got a couple of, uh, concerns. Not complaints, but concerns, heavy concerns from the businesses there who see people... It's the, it's one of the cross, it's one of, you know, Hawthorne Boulevard being in old, it was, uh, had the, the, the red car lines that used to travel along the center of the boulevard. So that took up like a big section of the middle, and then you had the streets that rolled up alongside north and south. So as we took out the red car lines, you know, the electric car lines a while back, 40, 50 years, that led, uh, that opened up the boulevard even more on the, uh, traffic routes that you had north and south. So therefore, if somebody were to cross the street from east to west or west to east along the street, they have to travel like a big, long distance. This is one of the, Hawthorne Boulevard, I think, is one of the biggest, widest boulevards that I've seen around the area, okay? So that specific one doesn't have a traffic light, stoplight. And the businesses that are there have observed a lot of close calls, accidents waiting to happen, okay? And if you drive up and down, that's probably one of the only ones that, that's probably the only one that I see between Imperial and El Segundo that might not have a traffic light. And I just, I would rather take proactive action to make sure something's taken care of there, and we take a look at that, and that we kind of, uh, incorporate that into our infrastructure plan to try to put like a traffic light there to avoid anything from happening. So just please note that, and if you could just, just write a memo at least, letting me know what your plans are and what the reality is of being able to get something done soon, okay? Alright, so this one is, uh, it's not my idea, but I've seen it in action. One of the la, one of the things we, we have, all cities have a problem with, but since we're your mayor and your council members, we wanna make sure that we increase the quality of life here in our city, is the panhandlers at the different liquor stores and at the 7-Elevens and stuff like that. So, I didn't come up with this idea. I was like, you know, I, I, I had pulled over because I wanted to get... You guys know I like Diet Coke, Diet Pepsi. I mean, that's, everybody knows that, right? So I had to pull over, you know, and I have a lot of, uh, fans of Diet Coke over here too, right? So I had to stop off and get some of the, and gummy bears. I got some gummy bears, and, and like, "What's going on with this classical music going on?" It's like, you know, and like, "Why they got classical music?" And I, oh, I put one in, one together. The, the outside of the 7-Elevens, nice and clear, there's just nobody there hanging around, lounging around. And so the main, what they're doing now in some of these 7-Elevens is putting the classical music to try to keep all the bums away, bums, and panhandlers, and people who, you know, asking for money too, you know, you know, for good reasons also, for honorable reasons, because they need help.
They don't like classical music.
I don't, I guess they don't like classical music, because that's the whole technique. So it's a big, big way of keeping away people from lounging around in front of these establishments. And it's worked. I've seen it at multiple shops, and every single place I've seen it, it's nice and clear and clean. So, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, uh, Mr. John Ramirez, whoever's here. I wanna make sure that, can, can you guys come up with a plan in which we just make, we reach out to the different liquor stores that we have, uh, the different 7-Elevens that we have? One, we have one on Hawthorne Boulevard and Roche Crans that has the classical music going on.
Yeah, the one over there has...
Look, not salsa, man. It's only classical music.
No, and the donut, right on the corner as well.
The donut shops, and just promote that as an idea to kinda keep your areas clean. That's gonna really go a long way. I mean, I hope these guys don't end up liking classical music and just start appreciating it and everything, but at least, can we try to come up with a plan? You could task Mr. Ramirez to, you know, do this too, as part of your technology plan that I hear that you're working on? Okay, so I think that'll go a long way, and we could, uh, we could, you know, that's kind of a, a nondescript way of kinda really impacting our quality of life. You like that? You like classical music?
I like classical music.
Don't tell me you're gonna be one of the people hanging out at the, for the classical music.
Hey, I might, yeah.
Just kidding. Alright, guys, it's late.
Uh, one more thing, one, go back, please.
Okay, go back.
I just, I, I would be remiss if I didn't thank, uh, Mr. Shadbeer, and thank Feliz Lopez, and everyone who put together that wonderful budget that we can all be so proud of. Thank you so much. And, um, um, I just wanted to make sure I, I got that in. And also to thank Councilman Awad for his report, which was excellent.
Everybody stepped up.
Thank you all.
Okay, so, Mr. City Attorney, you didn't like the idea of the classical music? You were going like this. Okay, we're ready? It's late, guys. I know everybody's grouchy, so let's, uh, if, there's no further items from City Council and, uh...
Hungry, man.
Staff? Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Wow.